Good evening. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for March 29, 2018. This meeting is being audio and video recording per the Massachusetts Open Meeting laws. Tonight, we have two hearings. The first is 123 Seccong Street, an appeal. Our second hearing is 84 North Street. I'd like to welcome Town Council tonight, Dave DeLuca, who will be helping us with some of the legal issues which relate to these cases. Mike, would you please read into the public record the notice of hearing?
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws and any and all amendments there too that a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals in room 124 of the Norfolk Municipal Building 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk on March 21, 2018 for the following application: Michael Brogan at 7:00 PM for an appeal of the building commissioner's zoning enforcement officer's decision in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 8, for the property addressed at 123 Seccong Street, reference assesses MAP 23 Block 54, Lot 55, in the R3 zoning district.
Thank you. Attorney DeLuca, are you going to give us a summary of the town's position?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for inviting me.
Thank you.
And to be here. I'm well aware of the long history this matter has with the town of Norfolk. I was present at the time of the selectmen hearings on the entertainment licenses that were issued here. That matter became the subject of a court proceeding before the Norfolk Superior Court insofar as there was an abutter appeal of the action taken by the Board of Selectmen in issuing entertainment licenses for the activity that was proposed by Mr. Brogan and the nature of the run-and-gun events that we've become familiar with. That appeal was heard in the Norfolk Superior Court in the vicinity of November of 2017. It was a so-called administrative appeal, that is, an appeal on the papers. There was no testimony taken, but it was a decision that was made on the law. The question before the court was whether or not it was that the Board of Selectmen were reasonable and proper in issuing entertainment license for the activity described as run-and-gun, and whether or not it was protected as an agricultural use of the property. And the parties, that is, the town and the abutters, we filed cross motions for judgment on the pleadings. We had a hearing, and then the court subsequently issued a decision, would think you have a copy of, wherein the court determined that, in fact, the activity as it was presented to the court was outside of the agricultural interest, that it was commercial in nature, and therefore not protected activity under, you know, the current zoning in place. With that decision in mind, and the instructions given in that decision, Mr. Bullock and I consulted on how it is the town is required to respond to that, and Mr. Bullock then issued a cease and desist, a copy of which I think you have a copy of.
Yeah.
Which carefully tracked the decision issued by the Superior Court judge in Norfolk Superior Court, that he was not going to be permitted to have the activities or the range of activities that were described in that complaint as the run-and-gun activities and would be required instead to conform to current zoning. The court essentially said that the town was improper or illegal in licensing those events since they did not conform to zoning. So by statute, 48, Section 6, there's an appeal that's allowed from any zoning enforcement decision made by a zoning enforcement officer in any town, and that's what brings us here tonight. So as indicated to you earlier, this is, although it's a public meeting, it is not the same as a public hearing wherein there is input from the public on all aspects of this case. Instead, it's a public hearing where there's a, you perform a quasi-judicial function where the building inspector is here, and you're certainly entitled to take his evidence in the case. I know the respondent is here, represented by counsel. He's certainly permitted to provide evidence in this case, and only to the extent that either yourself have any questions, your members of the board have any questions, if the public is able to offer any information, facts, that go to the underlying issue in this case, and that is whether or not the activity is inside, within or outside of the agricultural interests. That's the factual basis that you need to make a decision on. You have the unique advantage of hearing sworn testimony, where frankly, the court did not. The court simply was making a decision on the law. So that puts you in a little bit different position than the court that heard the case in Superior Court. So your job is to determine whether or not the building inspector's decision, as it was provided in the cease and desist, should be upheld or overturned, based on, you know, the facts and evidence that you gained in this hearing.
Thank you, Attorney.
Okay.
Bob, do you have anything to add to that at this time?
No, not right now. I mean, for the most part, Dave laid it out pretty much the way it is. The letter is sent out based on the judge's decision, so.
Does the Board have any questions for Attorney DeLuca before we go to the appellant?
Originally, when he was granted a license, that was granted by the Board of Selectmen?
Correct.
Okay. And that was a judgment based on the ability to apply? Were they able to offer that license to him?
It's hard to hear.
Were they able to offer the license to him?
Well, at the time, obviously, they felt they were.
All right. But yet, in court, it's been judged as not?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Question for counsel. If, this is more procedural, if we decide that we uphold the building commissioner's ruling, would, my guess is that the applicant would then go to the, is it the appeals court? This was Superior Court. Would they go to appeals court?
No. The right of review of your decision is back to the Superior Court, and the four corners of that review is whether or not your judgment in determining the building inspector's decision in this case, it is, was right and reasonable on the record in this case. Because, of course, we had a record to provide to the court from our hearings at the Board of Selectmen on the licensing issue. We will now have a hearing to provide to the court, if necessary, of the substance of this hearing.
Okay. So basically, then they would review whatever decision we come up with?
That's right. The Superior Court will review it on the same basis as they reviewed the last case.
Will they take testimony this time?
No, because it'll be the record that they're provided with from this hearing that'll be the basis of that proceeding.
Now, if we rule in favor of the applicant and the abutters appeal it, would they go through the same process?
Yes.
Would they go back to the Superior Court?
Yes.
Could I just ask a quick, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Don.
Don.
The last sentence of the judgment, it says, "If a renewed application is submitted to the town of Norfolk," I'm assuming if we uphold the...
Mr. Bullock's cease and desist order, and the applicant does a renewed application for an entertainment license to conduct any such race or event at the Run-and-Gun Ranch in the future, "The town shall consider and act upon such renewed application in due course in conformance with this court's decision and order." David, I'm a little confused. If the court has said no, all right, and we were to uphold our building commissioner's cease and desist order, and the applicant then reapplied, under what conditions can the town consider and act upon a renewed application?
Well, this is, you know, it gets tricky, okay? And I, you know, it would be easy for us, no, I understand, it would be easy for us to say an all-or-nothing proposition. What the court determined was that the scope and extent of those events exceeded the agricultural interest. I think if you read the decision closely, it said that, you know, because of the number of events and the size of the events, that that transformed the property from something purely agricultural to a commercial. What the court did not say is that you would not be permitted any of such events. It was really the size and scope of them. I think that the court said, "Look, those events overshadowed and swallowed up the agricultural interest. They became more than just incidental to the agricultural. They became the main event."
And so, who would determine, if such determination needed to be made, as to the number of events that would be considered incidental or not incidental?
I'm looking at them.
Okay.
I'm looking at the group that...
I didn't know if that would be the selectmen or...
No, honestly, I don't mean to be facetious, but that's where you have an opportunity to determine facts.
So are we going to consider whether or not this exceeded agricultural use as well? Or are we just going to, is our scope limited to whether or not Bob executed his duty?
Yeah, your, the scope of your review is whether or not he got it right or wrong.
Okay.
All right. At this time, I'd like to introduce Attorney Almeida, who is representing the appellant. Attorney?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Do I need a microphone?
Yes, you do. I think there is one here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the Board. My name is Brian Almeida. Can you all hear me okay? I'm not that familiar with a microphone. So I agree with everything that Attorney DeLuca said about the decision that you're tasked with evaluating. I would just present to you that this decision was more narrow than the cease and desist letter that kind of stemmed from it. The decision itself, as my, the board member, I believe his name is Bob, I don't know you by anything other than Bob, the man submitted directly to Mr. DeLuca's right, suggested that it is sort of a contrary to position to say that if the court decided that all barrel racing and all run-and-gun events are prohibited, why would the court also say, "Well, in the future, the applicant can apply for a new entertainment license?" And the reason is that I think the court implicitly recognized that it didn't have all the facts before it when it made this decision. On the facts before it, I would like to refer you to page five of the decision. About halfway down, there's a sentence that says, "It seems unlikely that those entertainment activity, it seems likely that those entertainment activities have become, over time, Mr. Brogan's primary use of the ranch property." So essentially, the court made an assumption that the run-and-gun barrel racing activities have become the predominant use of the property, and that's why it violates the agricultural exception to the zoning laws. However, as Mr. DeLuca pointed out, the court didn't have the opportunity to take testimony or hear facts about what extent the property is used for the barrel racing and run-and-gun activities, and to what extent the property is used for legitimate farming purposes that would fit within the zoning exception. And the court sort of couched that analysis throughout the decision in terms of money. How much revenue is the farm bringing in from the barrel races and the run-and-gun activities, and how much money is it bringing in from traditional farming activities? And the court did not take any testimony or really get any information about the extent to which the farm conducts normal farming activities, and how much of this, these ancillary activities the farm is engaged in. I'm not really sure procedurally what the board, how the board wants to proceed, if they want to just essentially take my word for it or have Mr. Brogan testify to it, but I'm told that the farm generated about $100,000 in revenue last year. $67,200 of it was from renting homes on the property. $28,000 was boarding horses, which no one disputes is a legitimate farm activity. Only about $2,400 was grossed from these barrel racing, run-and-gun activities. So I would argue that the court saying, essentially making the assumption that the primary use of the ranch property is run-and-gun and barrel racing is incorrect. If the court was analyzing it in terms of gross revenues, only 2% of the revenue from the farm last year was from run-and-gun and barrel racing activities. And again, I don't know if the board wants to hear from Mr. Brogan directly, but he tells me that the main reason for having these events on the property is not about making money. It's about strictly convenience for him, because his girlfriend and daughter are passionate about the run-and-gun events, and having them at his property is far more convenient to him than having to drive to a distant location somewhere in Massachusetts or beyond to engage in the, in these activities. Mr. Brogan tells me that of the 12 events that were hosted last year, six of them, he took in about $400 an event, so that's the $2,400 number that I said before, but the other $2,400 was donated back to the organization, the CMSA, the large organization that conducts these run-and-gun activities. So other than the court not having all the facts, I would also point out that the court's decision is quite narrow, in that it says, "On the facts before me, I determine that the previous entertainment licenses issued, on the facts before me specifically, do not fit within the farming exception." But the court lacked this crucial information about just how much money the farm brings in from these activities, and frankly, how little the funds that are brought in from these activities factor into the entire economy of the farm itself. And I would also state that, to some extent, I think Mr. Brogan wants some clarity also from this body about what exactly the cease and desist letter prohibits. The letter itself states that Mr. Brogan is prohibited from conducting run-and-gun barrel races and shooting events. And I would argue that the term "events" is too vague to be actionable in the sense that, what constitutes an event? Is it a public event that's open to the community at large where run-and-gun and barrel racing are occurring? Is it, if it's a private event, is that considered an event? Because this Superior Court decision is not the only Superior Court decision that has tried to kind of parse out what should be prohibit, what should be prohibited and what should not be. On November 27th, no, November 22nd of the year 2017, the Superior Court heard an application for a preliminary injunction from an abutter seeking to prohibit what's called a jackpot practice, which is a practice run-and-gun event, not an official event from the CMSA or a public event, where participants, I suppose, pay an entry fee, and the winner of that practice session is paid that amount, the jackpot. And the Superior Court, in analyzing this preliminary injunction to prevent the jackpot practice, found that that was not an event in the sense of whatever the term of our "event" means, that perhaps because it was a private event, it's not an event. So I would argue that even on the face of the cease and desist letter itself, it's still too vague to determine exactly what it prohibits and what it does not. And again, I would just point back to the fact that the court anticipated future entertainment license applications. It didn't prohibit them. It said, "The applicant can present a new entertainment license," perhaps in recognition of the fact that the court didn't have all the facts and that a body such as yourselves would be able to hear the exact facts that pertain to whether or not the farming exception applies or not, and determine whether or not a license should be granted. So I would argue that this body can allow Mr. Brogan to seek an entertainment license without being in violation of the Superior Court's order in this case, because the Superior Court contemplated that there would be future entertainment license applications, and that under the farming exception, this isn't necessarily prohibited if it's an ancillary part of the farming activities rather than the primary part of the farming activities that the court seemed to assume that it was. And I would also, on a final note, point out that this decision of the Norfolk Superior Court is not yet a final judgment. Mr. Brogan, through my office, on March 1, filed a motion to intervene in the case, arguing that since it's his property that's being affected by this decision, he should have been a party to this lawsuit from the very beginning. And the Superior Court denied that motion on the grounds that Mr. Brogan should have acted sooner in knowing that this case could affect his property rights, and he should have acted sooner. However, Mr. Brogan is appealing that decision to the appeals court, and until that appeal is decided, this judgment that the cease and desist letter is entirely predicated on is not yet final. So I'm not sure. I think that's all that I have to submit to this board at this time, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and if the board is interested in hearing from my client directly, they certainly can.
Right. All right. I think the first thing to clear up is, you know, Bob or Attorney DeLuca, maybe the, this definition of events, what was included in the cease and desist?
Well, in the last paragraph of the judgment, it said, "It is hereby ordered that any and all entertainment licenses issued by the town of Norfolk to Michael Brogan with respect to any and all barrel races and/or shooting events to be conducted at or on the run-and-gun ranch are null and void effective immediately." So that was, that was essentially why the cease and desist was sent. And then, you know, it goes on to say that Mr. Brogan is free to reapply to the town for a new entertainment license that the town shall consider and act upon in due course. And I think in conformance with this decision in order the, in order in the town's zoning bylaws as appropriate, but I think there's things within the decision that have to be looked at, you know, with respect to what's incidental and what's primary on the property, because I think that really is a determining factor on whether or not the decision is...
I think, I mean, my question was, you know, he mentioned the jackpot event. You know, jackpot event was not considered a event. So when your appeal, your decision was events, are they allowed to practice on the property? Are they allowed to have private events on the property? What was the determination of what an event is?
Maybe I can speak to that, and it has been a source of some...
Uh, maybe I can speak to that, um, and it has been a source of some confusion, uh, because, um, as we understand, um, Mr. Brogan's property, uh, is populated by, uh, a number of horses that he has there as boarders, uh, and that, you know, the use of those horses in activities on the, the property, I think are perfectly, and the court recognized perfectly permissible. Uh, what was troublesome was the idea that, uh, there were, um, uh, quite ex- uh, uh, quite extensive involvement with the public events, that is, public being invited onto the property for a fee to participate in those events. So I think maybe, you know, some distinction and, and perhaps counsel or Mr. Brogan himself will give us a little bit of a, a breakdown on, on the number of public versus private events. If, if the jackpot thing was a, was a private event, uh, where only members were invited to participate, those that, you know, had, uh...
Members of what?
Excuse me. Wait, please.
If, if there were only members, uh, that, uh, were, you know, part of whatever organization he has there, um, uh, or members, but what I mean by that is, uh, uh, they were, you know, people that, that pay a fee to board a horse there, uh, then, then that's more of a private event, uh, as opposed to what, what the court perceived as, uh, uh, the, uh, you know, invitation to the public to come and participate in some of these broader events.
Attorney Almeida, you got a question?
Um, less a question and more just, um, like I said earlier, at the very least, if, uh, if the least that we can get from this board is clarity as to what an event is and what an event is, that would be extremely helpful going forward. Um, because I agree with Attorney DeLuca that I think the court was considering an event to be a public event, and the court clearly was troubled by the receiving the fee. Um, the economic benefit, I think, is really how the court analyzed whether the farming exception applied or not, was in terms of dollars and cents. So if, if this board could at the very least clarify that in the future, if Mr. Brogan is not to receive an economic benefit from having these events, then maybe it's not an event at all. But I would say that there's some conflict there between Superior Court decisions where the jackpot practice, there was, there was an exchange of funds going on, but I guess the difference is there, the money isn't going directly to Mr. Brogan, it's being kind of paid into a pot and paid out to one contestant. So if, at the very least, if we can have clarity that the jackpot, what's the difference, the distinction between the jackpot practice and the public event, and what would be permissible going forward in light of this board's judgment and the court's ruling?
Okay, so maybe you can, for us, or Mr. Brogan, can outline to us what the events that we can use last year for an example. Um, were they CMSA events? Were CMSA, uh, individuals the only people who participated? Um, could I bring my donkey down to, um, to participate in this event? That might be a public event. Uh, what is the breakdown of private versus public versus members of CMSA? If you can explain that, Mr. Brogan, to us.
So, an event in our, uh, I guess, opinion, or, is, if it's a CMSA event, it's on a, on a, uh, website, it shows that there's points. So, uh, a good way to put it is, is if I have a hockey team and you have a hockey team and we have a scrimmage, well, that doesn't count towards points towards the end of the year, it's just a, a, it's a play, it's a practice. So, an event, in my opinion, is an event that scores points to go towards your year end, not a practice. What a practice is for us or a jackpot is, we bring in ten new shooters, they have not done it before, we have typically ten instructors, we go through, we show them all gun safety, go through, show them how to run a course, so forth, we spend half a day doing that. The other half of the day, we have a fun group shoot, um, and it's called the jackpot. And you take the twenty ins- you know, the ten instructors and the ten contestants, put them together, just so they can go through and see what it's like in a miniature version. Um, you know, we have practice on Tuesday night, it's not just borders, it's, that's what we do. We train people that own their own horses and own their own guns to practice, you know, to, to do this. So people will come in on Tuesday night and they'll, we have a two-hour practice, they'll practice, or they'll come in on a Saturday or a Sunday. It's not an event, it's a practice. It's just like lessons, lessons are not events, you know, that, they, there's money changing hands, but there's money that changes hands in everything, I mean, you know, if you go get an English lesson on how to jump, you gotta pay that instructor. So it's not like it's any different, you know, you're paying for a lesson, so...
Are these events open to the public, these practices and jackpots?
No, no.
Okay.
No, so the difference is that, a- a- and I'm sorry, they are not open to the public, they are only to CMSA members or club members. Um, the same thing on the barrel races when we have a, a warm-up day, it's only to the MBHA people that come, they come and we have a warm-up, you know, a couple of times before the events start to get their horses ready for the season. It's, you know, yeah, there's some money that exchanges, but it's not, you know, like we're renting a facility to, you know, have a, a show, you know, um...
What is the difference between a CSMA member and a club member, or are they the same?
So, uh, the, the club is Northeast Six Shooters, it's, uh, New Hampshire, Connecticut, Mass, Rhode Island. Um, that club belongs to a large organization called CMSA, Cowboy Mounted Shooters Association. That's all throughout the United States, so, that's, uh...
Mike, could you explain to the board, because I think it's, it's probably outside of something we, we do on a daily basis, is, A, what is...
Okay.
Shoot, what is the shooting? What is the barrel racing? How many events, why don't you start with, you know, how many events you had last year?
Alright, so, so we were, we...
What was the mix?
We were licensed for twenty-four events last year, we actually held twelve events. Um, we ran into a complication with other clubs having events, so we didn't want to start splitting people, so we let them have theirs, then we had ours at the end of the season. Um, as far as what the cowboy mounted shooting is, it's pretty much barrel racing with, uh, forty-five caliber pistol, and what you do is you shoot a black powder cartridge, it's like, uh, a starter's pistol, like you have at the marathon, they hit, you know, it's, there's no projectile that comes out of the gun, uh, spectators stand right on the fence line, the black powder goes out and breaks the balloon within ten feet, because it has a hot amber that lands on the balloon and the balloon breaks, alright? There's no projectile, they're forty-five caliber, single-action cowboy guns that you have to cock every time and shoot, um, they use a shotgun as well, the shotgun uses the same exact shell, um, the shotguns are modified to take a forty-five caliber pistol blank and, um, that, um...
And what is a barrel race, per se?
A barrel race is a, i- is typically a triangle, one barrel at the far end and two at three and nine o'clock, and you start at six o'clock. You run to three o'clock, you turn the barrel, you run to nine o'clock, you turn the barrel, you run to twelve o'clock, you turn the barrel, and you come back, and there's a timer line, alright? And your time is on what you ran, if you knock a barrel over, you're dis- you're disqualified. The cowboy mounted shooting is the same type of thing, other than a barrel race only has one, one set of barrels, that's it. Every single horse runs the same pattern every time. The cowboy mounted shooting is about a hundred different patterns, they'll pick them out of a hat that morning and say, "These are the four we're running today," but it's the same thing, it's a timed event. There's a starter's line, you cross the line, you shoot five on the way up in a different pattern, you switch guns, you shoot five on the way back, every balloon you miss is five-second penalty. So it's a timed event, misses, you get penalized.
And turning the barrels is obviously a horse going around the barrel.
Turning a barrel is a horse going around the barrel.
And how many, how many events did you have that had the black powder versus, how many were barrel races?
Last year, the last three years, we've had two, um, shoots at the, on the property, and last year, we had, um, eight barrel races, and then a miniature horse show, and, uh, forget what the, oh, uh, we had another couple more barrel races, yeah.
So roughly nine barrel races, two black powder shoots and one miniature horse.
Yeah, and as far as our barrel races that we do at the end of the year, I mean, honestly, they can be from eight to eighteen contestants, that's it. This is not a big show. I mean, you know, they take about an hour and a half to do, two hours on the tops. The biggest show we had in the fall was twenty competitors, it was two hours long, it started noon and it was over at two. The cowboy mounted shoots are about an eight-hour process, and there's two barrel races that are significant, that they, um, they bring about sixty barrel races into the property, it runs about eight hours as well. So there's four events that are eight-hour day, the rest of the events are a couple hours.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I have a question for Mr. Brogan. In the, um, court's document, it says that the town gave you an approval for twenty events in twenty seventeen, and you just told us that you had eleven events.
I had twelve, I had, I held twelve, I, I permitted for twenty, and again, we had a conflict with another organization in the spring, so we canceled our spring series, so we didn't have any in the spring.
So you, you, you were planning to have up to twenty?
Yes, sir.
Questions from the board, from Mr. Brogan, or...
I was just counting, he, he said that he had as many, twelve events last year?
Yeah, I believe it was twelve, sir.
Yeah, because you said you had, uh, two shoots, eight, uh, barrel?
Nine barrel.
Nine barrel, okay, so, alright.
And what miniature, miniature horse?
And then the miniature horse show.
Alright, good, alright, so you had like a twelve or thirteen, okay.
Just, just, we haven't talked, at first I've heard of miniature horse show, is, how many people would come to something like that?
So the miniature horse show, there was probably, um, fifty people in the, on the property, um, yeah, I, I...
Are you asking how many, how many residents or how many people in total?
No, overall.
How many people overall?
Overall.
Yeah, it's fifty people, and just so the, the board knows, it's, the, the parcel land is fifteen acres, so it's not like we're putting them on an acre.
And we do have letters from both fire chief and police chief, which state that they have no, there was no issues on the property that affected fire protection or police business during these shoots, if that has been added into testimony.
Yeah, we did, we did hire a detail for the PM, uh, PMC challenge, of course, was on a day that we had an event, so we contacted the police department and hired a detail for the morning and had a, a officer stand at the end of the driveway to get the trailers into the event.
Two questions.
Joe.
All parking was on the property?
All parking is in the property, and at this point, all parking is not even seen from the street. Years ago, we used to pack cars on the front lawn, now we just put, every, everyone goes into the back. You honestly can't tell just driving down the street that there's an event.
Was there a limitation when he was granted the twenty events for twenty seventeen? Any limitation on the number of participants? I don't...
I'll answer that.
Okay.
Sixty.
Sixty was the maximum?
Sixty was the maximum, we hit it one time, when it was a combined barrel race from the Western Mass and the Cape, came together at our place.
The, the question was though, was there a limit placed on the license that you were granted? Did they tell you ahead of time?
Sixty, sir.
You were given that as the limit?
Yeah, the selectmen and myself went back and forth and came up with sixty.
Yeah, I just don't have that decision in front of me, thank you.
That's, that's about all we can do in a day.
And that was residents and participants?
Now, the big barrel races, sixty, sixty competitors.
Competitors, didn't limit the number of residents?
No, the, they ask me for a roundabout number, and I, I usually say, "For those bigger events, there could be a hundred people there."
Okay, could I have a quick question? Yes. So, in this, in the court's analysis here, um, it states that, uh, residents have complained about loud music, amplified speaker systems, frequent gunshots during these compares, illegally parked cars, overnight campers, open fires.
Yeah, um, yeah, I definitely would like to address that. Um, there has never been a fire on my property, other than when I cleared it years ago, and chief can tell you that, because they came down. Um, we had a fire to burn off the debris, we do not have campfires. We do not allow people to spend overnight, other than if, it's a friend of ours, and we have a friend from Tennessee that comes, puts an RV there and stays for a week, but as far as I'm aware, that's allowed in the town. So it's not like we're putting in forty trailers for a weekend event. On one occasion, or two occasion, he's come up and we've had a trailer overnight. Um, the property is deemed sixty, uh, sixty-one B, which is recreation use, and we are allowed to actually have campers on site because of that, um, so, but we don't, alright? Parking, parking is never an issue, and you can ask Mr. Stone, there is never put a car on that street. And I will make a comment that the miniature horse show came to us because they had had their miniature horse show over on Miller Street, and they came to us because you could not get down Miller Street when they had the miniature horse show, because cars were parked on both sides of the road going down all the way past the stables. So they came to us and asked us if we could host the next one, and that, you know, to try and deal with parking.
With regard to the loudspeakers and...
Loudspeakers, so loudspeakers, we have a PA system, so, similar to the, to the one that I hear from the, from the ball field, right? It tells you who's up, who's next up to bat, you know, that, what that person got. So during a barrel race, they'll do an announcement that Joe's up, Al's on deck, and Mike's in the hole, and then that guy will run and they'll announce his time, and they'll say, "Now Joe's up," now, you know, they'll go through that. There's music, is only during the two shoots, they do play music, every contestant gets to pick their own music, it's for, and just so you have an idea, a typical run, meaning then the time they cross that starting line, shoot ten, ten rounds and come back, is typically fifteen seconds, and that's how long their music plays. Then the next person comes up, it's quiet until the next person comes up, and then as that person goes, their music plays, alright, so...
Well, good. Mike, is there any alcohol on the property?
No.
Okay. Uh, Mike, a little bit about the animals, um, you know, a little bit about animals and horses.
Yes, sir.
I do get to, uh, the privilege of being the animal inspector for Norfolk Rantham in Plainville, and I did spend a number of years in the seventies at Suffolk Downs, working for the Kirby Farm, and I did spend a number of years in the eighties, working for Dottie Morcos, who was the seventy-sixth Olympic dressage champion. Is this horse, could I take a standard quarter horse and teach it to do this? Or is this a very specific type of horse?
It, it's not a very, I, I won't say it's a specific type of horse, but ninety percent of them are quarter horses, um, they're a trained animal, I mean, you know, to go shoot a gun off of a horse doesn't happen, you can always do it once, good luck doing it the second time, okay? So it takes, uh, you know, consistency, and that's why we have practice, and that's why we, you know, train these horses for gunfire. Um, typically, it's a quarter horse, um, every horse that we board is either a shooting horse or a barrel horse. We do not do any English at all, we only deal with barrel horses and shooting horses.
Is, um, you mentioned that your, uh, your girlfriend, your daughter, are they, uh... They do this as a enjoyment, is there, obviously twenty-four hundred dollars is certainly not enough revenue, this is to call it a business, in my opinion?
No.
What is the, you know, I mean, dressage, i- i- my knowledge is that there's three qualities to horse breeding and management, is, uh, one, the horse, you know, can it perform what it's supposed to perform?
Yeah.
Two is the breeding of a horse.
Yep.
You know, is it, can it be used, or can it be used for breeding later on because of its innate abilities? of its innate abilities? And third is, you're selling the trainer.
Correct.
Because obviously, as we all know, when we watch the Kentucky Derby, the horse gets forty percent of the attention, and sixty percent of the attention goes to the trainer. So the third is, do you have a good trainer, and therefore, is that trainer somebody I want to hire to look at my horse? So can you speak to that a little bit?
So, uh, my partner is Paige Witt. She came up from Alabama. She was, um, Tennessee state champ. She's been national champ. She has got more titles than, you know, in cowboy mounted shooting than anybody in the Northeast, and probably most of the shooters combined. The way I put it to people, 'cause we travel all over. Uh, we're going to Pennsylvania next month. We'll be down in Mississippi. We'll go to Tennessee. She goes there to win. When you come home as a winner, you, being a client, want to have lessons with the person that's the best. If you want to learn how to dr- drive a race car, you're going to go learn how to do it from the best person there is. So, uh, she's really good. My daughter has obviously taken to the sport in the last, um, five years. Um, she has come quite far in it. Um, we just went to South Carolina over New Year's, and there was a hundred and thirty shooters. We took, it took four days to get through, and Paige actually won ladies overall. My daughter won her class overall. So, um, i- it, it's something that's newish to up here in the, in the Northeast. It's a huge sport down south, huge. Um, and that's what we're trying to do, is trying to, you know, we, we raise these horses, we train them, we sell them. We'll take, um, I mean, I just took a Mustang off of a farm that was going to go to wherever, um, to try and train it to become a shooting horse. It didn't take. It did take the barrels, and we just actually gave it to a young barrel racer. Um, 'cause it's, you know, I didn't want to see it go to waste.
Do we have other questions from the board?
I have a, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead, Dave.
Mr. Brogan, um, how many horses do you keep on the property as, as boarders?
We have, uh, eight horses over there today. Um, yeah, so, uh, four boarders and four, oh, no, we just got rid of the Mustangs. So we have seven, I'm sorry. So we, I have seven there. Three are mine right now, four are boarders.
So what would the, uh, average high or low be over the course of, uh, of a year?
For horses on the property?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'd say a high would be twelve. I mean, we're, we're a small-
Okay, so you, you would never really expect to have more than twelve as boarders on the property?
Um, someday we could, David, yes, you know?
But you, your experience so far is that that would be high?
Never, ever.
Okay. So when you have an event?
Yeah.
How many total horses are on the property?
For those, uh, for the two shoots and the two barrel races, somewhere is between forty to sixty horses. For the remaining barrel races, somewhere between five and fifteen horses, because the rest of them are all people that board for me doing the barrel races.
Right. So the, I guess that's, um, in part the question. When you have, uh, the events, and you said there is, there, you had twelve events last year?
Yeah.
Uh, what would the average number of horses be, uh, on the property during the course of, um, any one of those twelve events?
Uh, for the four big events?
Yeah.
That could be forty to sixty. And for the smaller events, which are our small barrel races, five to twelve.
Okay. And so, and then-
Oh, I'm sorry. That's additional to our horses. So, I'm sorry, to our seven horses, David, yes.
Uh, is, and all of those, the twelve events that you've, uh, that you've, you were, you said you held last year, they were all events to which the public was invited?
Yes, sir.
Right. They were not events that were just among those people that board with you, right?
No.
Okay. Uh, in addition to boarding, uh, horses, what, what other, and, and holding the events that you've already described, what, what, what other things do you do at the farm?
We do lessons, we do clinics. Um, that's, anything related to a horse.
Okay, so is that, according to your council, is that assumed in the, uh, the twenty-eight thousand of gross income?
The twenty-eight thousand is straight board.
Just boarding?
Just boarding.
Is there any income from the other activities, other than the running gun activities?
Is there, from the lessons?
Lessons, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. My, my partner gets that. She's the trainer, she gets the lesson money. The farm doesn't. You know, and just so you have an idea, on a lesson, forty to sixty dollars. But, um, typically, to come on a Tuesday night, it's twenty bucks.
So the, uh, the, the events, uh, the, the twelve events that you, you had, uh, they, uh, they all involved, uh, people that were invited from the public. And did they pay a fee?
No, sir. The only people that pay a fee are the actual contestants. I just, I like to open it to the public. I mean, we have, you know, if it's a fairly nice day, we'll have a bunch of people just stop and, and come in and, and ask what we're doing and hang out for a couple hours and leave. That's what it should be. It should be a family, community event. And that's what I'm trying to keep it. I, I don't want to make it private. I mean, I know I can make this private and not, but I don't want to have to make it private. I don't want to have to stand at the end of the driveway and turn cars away. If there's a dozen people that want to come watch, let them come watch.
Are you able to give the board a, an estimate? Uh, you, you, you gave us a pretty good, uh, estimate of, you know, your gross income, there was rent, there's boarding horses and this, and, and running gun. Can you break it down in terms of percentage of time? Uh, if you were to take it on a weekly or monthly basis, how much time is devoted to, uh, the, the, the events as compared with other activities that you've already described, whether they be private lessons or something of that sort?
Two, sixteen, thirty-two, forty, I don't know. So there may be a hundred, a hundred hours a year spent on events. And, um, as far as lessons and, and, and lessons and clinics, and are you talking like taking care of the horses too? Or, I mean, my farm duties that I do every night, that's three hours in itself every day.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, but I, I, I guess what I'm, I'm asking, for the board's benefit?
Yeah.
Is to, is to try to get a, um, a sense of, you know, what else is going on, uh, on your property, um, on, on the days and times that you're not having, uh, one of these twelve events. You, you, you've already described some, some lesson activity, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Now I'm asking, by way of, um, you know, percentages on a yearly, a monthly, uh, mo- I'm sorry, weekly or monthly basis, what percentage of time are you spending on those activities as compared to the, uh, the running gun?
Oh, she probably spends, I'd say, six to eight hours a week, um, typically, doing lessons.
Yep.
Yeah.
So again, are you able to give me a percentage time? Is that fifty percent of the time spent towards, uh, lessons and other private activities, agricultural related activities?
When you say fifty percent, it's, I mean, we both work full-time, David. So we both have full-time jobs, and we deal with those. And then we come home at night, and I deal with the chores, and she does a lesson here or there. And, um, so I, I, I don't, I don't get the percentage thing. I'm sorry.
How many hours a day we've, related to the boarding?
How, three.
Uh, it takes three hours a day to make sure the horses are boarded, fed, fed morning, fed night.
Yeah, deal with hay, go get hay. I mean, yeah, yeah.
At least three hours.
You mentioned clinics.
Yeah.
So if I, if I was a boarder?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I had a horse, and I wanted to have a clinic, um, involving shooting.
Yep.
All right. So that might be any time that we would schedule it mutually?
A clinic would be typically ten to twelve people.
Oh, okay.
A, a lesson is me and you, private.
Would I actually shoot at a, at a lesson?
Uh, when you get to that point, you'd be shooting on the ground for a while first. You'll never shoot off the back of a horse until you get gun safety down. And obviously, you would have to have a license to carry, so you should have your gun safety already. So, yeah, you're not just going to show up and, we're not going to throw you on a horse and you're going to go shoot balloons. No. And, and don't get me wrong, we have some, we, we have a SAS shooter, which is, um, SAS is, so they'll, they'll line up a, a arrangement of guns on a table, and a, a competitor will go down the row of guns and shoot all these guns at different targets and different things. And that SAS shooter is like one of the best in the, i- in the area. He has just taken lessons from us to learn how to ride before he can shoot. I know he can shoot, but he's not going to shoot until he learns how to ride properly.
I have a question. How much time do you spend in preparation for one of the events?
Couple hours the night before. Uh, I drag, I drag the arena, and, um, I'll, I'll get the timers set up, and, um, then the organization that runs the event runs it for the day. So all I do is prepare the field, like for a baseball game. The town goes out and drags the field and makes it look pretty, and that's what I do.
And then after the event?
After the event, the people that typically host it clean up. We still have an hour at the end. I mean, you know, um, and, excuse me. So during a barrel race, it's a little different. Every five competitors that go, I have to take the tractor back out and drag the arena. So there's a little bit more time of mine spent doing that. Every five contestants, I have to go back out and re-grade it.
But, but you're not out there weeks before an event?
No, no, sir. No, I, it, it takes me an hour to drag it, put the barrels out, put the time, a couple hours. Couple hours on a Saturday, Friday night, or Saturday morning.
Mike, is it reasonable assume, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, and going back to Dave's, which makes some sense, because again, we want to, one of the key factors is, is it, is it incidental, or is it a primary use? If you do three hours a day cleaning stalls, that's a little about eleven hundred hours a year.
But that has nothing to do with the events.
Understand. That's eleven hundred hours a year. If you run two shoots at eight hours, that's sixteen hours.
Yeah.
If you run-
I figured-
If you run eight, eight-
I figured three events at eight hours, Chris. Two shoots, two big barrel races, and the, and the miniature horse show, which I really don't do anything.
I mean, I, what I was trying to get to is, if you have, if you have eight events that are no more than four hours, that's thirty-two hours.
Yeah.
And then if you have your two events, which are eight hours, that's sixteen hours.
Yeah.
And then if you're dragging the ring in between all these horse races, that comes out to about twenty-four hours. What I'm coming up with is that if, just based on your mucking of stalls and your maintenance of your, your horse farm, you're spending about eleven hundred hours compared to you're spending about a hundred hours performing and prepping for these events?
Yep.
Is based on what, just trying to make sure, does that make sense? That doesn't include lessons?
Right.
And now practices, which could be, and/or clinics?
Correct.
Okay. So do you know, can you give us any rough idea of lessons, practices and clinics per year? What that percentage of time would be?
Uh, it could be, it could be five to eight hours, uh, a week for lessons. Uh, clinics, we probably, um, we might do six this year, maybe eight hour day. And, um, just-
Lessons were, uh, five at eight?
Five to eight hours.
Five to eight hours?
A week.
Per week. So roughly two hundred and fifty hours per year?
Yes, sir.
Something around there.
Yeah.
Dean, you, you calculated a lot. What about those jackpot events? How much would go to?
Well, jackpot event would be a-
Okay, so, so we don't, we donate the arena to the jackpot, all right? Um, what I do is I just say, put the money back in the pot. Um, so it goes back to the contestants. We, we don't get anything for that. As far as time, it would be the same hour, two hours to prepare for a jackpot. So you could add twelve hours to that for-
So my question is, how many jackpot events?
Well, we only had, we had one last year at jackpot, and a couple of clinics.
But clinics, again, are not open to the public.
No, and neither was the jackpot, to be honest.
Okay.
That's good to have a number.
Do, the forty to sixty, I guess it's forty to sixty participants at the big four events, we'll call them?
Yeah, yeah.
How many of those does, do you or your partner train of those forty to sixty horses?
Paige is very involved with the club, so I would have to say she trains at least twenty to thirty of those people personally. Like I said, when you want to have a lesson, you want to get it from somebody with some credentials. Um-
Any other questions from the board? Dave?
Yeah, I, I'd like to understand only-
Yeah.
I'm trying to get a context of how much shooting goes on.
Okay.
Okay, and, 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 uh-
So, so for those two events, it is for eight hours a day. But I, I will bring you to this. Where we are located is between the Walpole Sportsman's Club and the Noon Hill Sportsman's Club. So I have lived on that property and been on that property forty-seven years. There is not a day that goes by that you don't hear continuous gunfire from both of those clubs, okay? Not a day, all right? We shoot twice for two events, eight hours a day, and then we'll shoot typically on Tuesdays for practice, and possible weekend, Saturday or Sunday, depending on what's going on. Um, the only other reason why we shoot, we showed a horse, uh, about two months ago. Somebody came up on a Sunday afternoon at two o'clock. We called down to the police station, just like anyone who wants to burn, we called down to the police station. We say, we're going to discharge firearms at one twenty-three. We did that. We discharged ten blanks for the whole day. Um, but somebody wants to buy a horse, they want to see it shot off. So, um, the, the, the two days, there, there's a lot of, um, gunshots for the two days.
So, okay, you, you characterized two days as, as, as heavy shooting, okay?
Yeah.
I'm still trying to, uh, understand of the other, and, and-
Oh, so on, on a Tuesday, I'm sorry. So on a Tuesday, say we have four competitors, or four, well, say we have six, six, um, people doing lessons. She will typically set up two stages. So there would be, that's twelve, so that's a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty rounds that go off in about two hours. The lessons are typically from, uh, five to seven, or five-thirty.
And is that shooting done inside that big building or outside?
Yeah, we, we practice typically inside. Um, obviously, you can't practice outside right now, and we haven't been able to since October because of the weather, or November. So, yeah, we do practice inside during the winter months. On, uh, when, when spring comes, though, it's outside. It's, it's definitely outside. It's, the arena outside is four times the size of the ins, indoor arena. Um, and we like to get the horses stretched out, you know? It's a much bigger venue. Um, so I, I hope I answered that.
Yeah, and when you shoot inside, does that muffle the sound?
It muffles it on the outside, but it actually sends a reverb on the inside. So it, it actually- It muffles it on the outside, but it actually sends a reverb on the inside, so it, it actually helps to train the horses. Cause it's actually a little bit louder on the inside than it would be outside of the building when you're shot. So it actually, I, I, I think it help, helps with the training. Yeah.
Mike, at the end of the day, as I, I referenced the Kentucky Derby earlier.
Yeah.
What is the ultimate, I guess, prize? Triple crown winner, obviously, we hear of, what is the ultimate prize?
Ultimate, ultimate prize is to be the world champion.
Are you the national champion or are you the world champion?
So, the, the ultimate prize is to be the world champion. Paige went there, not last year, but the year before and competed, didn't have her own horse and didn't do extremely well. We go to Tennessee, which is the Eastern Regionals, that takes the whole side. They, then they, they take the east, best of the east, and then they'll take the best of the west. And they meet in Texas and that's where they have the worlds. So for us to go to, to Tennessee and her to, to win a Eastern United States championship, she can show you a few belt buckles. The, the ultimate goal is to be the world champion, which is actually a female at this point and has been for the last three years, I believe, has been a, a woman.
Okay, right.
And obviously, there's prize money, you know.
Right.
It, it, it's not like in our backyard.
What is the prize money?
Ten thousand, fifteen thousand.
Chris, could, could we just kind of like sum up a little bit? There's been a lot of numbers thrown around and so forth. I just want to just get, it's an overview of, so, so this is a farm where you, where, it's not a farm where you, you know, grow vegetables, it's a farm where you, where you board horses.
Yep.
And those horses are, they're, are they boarded there for the purpose of training them to become these types of horses?
No, they're, they're boarded there for the, um, well, I can tell you that the last boarder that came, actually is a tenant of mine, rents a house out back, and she boards there for the convenience of, the barrel races are there, she lives there and now her horse is there. I mean, so it's a convenient, it's, um.
But what is the primary function of this farm?
We, we raise, we raise cowboy mounted shooting horses, all right? That's what we do. And the reason why we bring the barrel racers into it, just so, that's where we get our clients from. Barrel races are, that get bored of doing what they do day in, day out and they wanna add something to it. That's why we have barrel races and that's why we, you know.
Are you, are you a breeder?
Yeah, we do breed.
So you're a breeder and so forth and, and is it conceivable that somebody would breed horses but not train them on site? Is that, is that conceivable or? I have no idea how.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't ever do that. I mean, we have, um, our first stud we got at six months old and we've trained him and he's five years old now. That's my daughter's horse. You know, they're trained on site.
So, so part of being a breeder of this type of horse means that you have to, really, in essence, it means you should train them as well?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so, so the primary function of this farm is to breed and train horses?
No, the primary function of this farm is to train horses. We, we didn't, we, we haven't had good luck breeding. My, I'll just, you know, the, the first stud had an issue, a breeding accident and we had to gild them and.
And so training horses equals barrel races and shooting?
That's all we do.
So that's what training means?
That's what our training is.
Okay.
At this time, and again, as Attorney DeLuca mentioned, though it is a public forum, we are, this board is taking in facts. We don't wanna hear that you don't like Mike Brogan. We don't wanna hear you don't like horses. We want anybody who has some factual information to add to the hearing for the boards to take in, for us to make a decision. I'd like to hear that. If it does turn into a, I don't like Mr. Brogan, we will not hear any more public opinion, okay? So if anybody's got public opinion, we welcome you to address us at this point. I'm gonna ask you to get the microphone.
Tara Comendal, one of the plaintiffs in the action that Attorney DeLuca was talking about before.
You're gonna have to speak into the mic.
Sure, um, I had written a letter as well indicating that.
Could you tell us who you are?
Tara Comendal, I'm the plaintiff in the action that resulted in the cease and desist order. So I just wanted to clarify a few points as I was, attended all of the court hearings. I know what the judge relied on. I know, um, how I read the decision is slightly different than how Attorney DeLuca and Attorney Almeida read the decision. And I also wanted to point out that Mr. Brogan's motion to intervene was denied. And he has subsequently appealed that, but there's been no stay of the Superior Court order. So that order by Judge Davis is in fact, in effect. It's misplaced to say that it's not a final judgment. He was not granted intervener status, so until he's granted that intervener status, he's not a party. So he can be requested to be an intervener from the appeals court, but as of right now, there is no appeal. The town did not appeal, Comendals did not appeal. So that judgment stands and I would suggest that you can abide by that judgment. I think it was thoughtfully crafted. I also want to point out that in determining his judgment, Judge Davis relied on the administrative record. And as you may be aware, there were several hearings before the Board of Selectmen. They took lots of, I don't know if you would consider it under oath, but it certainly was lots of testimony by Mr. Brogan, lots of testimony by the neighboring residents. So I just wanted to clear that up, that they had sufficient information in which to grant those licenses. It was deemed by the court that they weren't authorized to do so. I also disagree with Attorney Almeida's reading of the decision that it focused on monetary. I don't think that ever was a subject of the Selectmen's decision. I think.
The Selectmen's decision or the Superior Court's decision?
The Superior Court's decision as well as the Selectmen. I think what it, what it comes down to is, um, the, um, it's not so much, it's not so much the amount of, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get my notes here back to where I started. It's not so much the amount of revenue that Mr. Brogan is taking in. It is in fact that the number of people that are coming to these events, they're bringing their own horses, they're bringing their own guns, they're coming in to do that. It's not a situation where Mr. Brogan has his horses there, his three horses that he owns, and he's presenting those horses and people are being taught on those horses. This is where people are bringing in their own merchandise. In the normal situation, you would have a farm, which normally would be allowed to do these types of activities in a residential neighborhood because they were selling their wares. They were focused on growing crops and selling those crops. That is, I think, the key turning factor in which the judge made that decision. I also wanted to point out that Mr. Brogan is not breeding horses on his property. He's not licensed to do that, so if in fact he's breeding on that property, he's doing so in violation of mass general laws. The stud horse that Mr. Brogan indicates, he's also not on property. He's not on the property. The Comendals deposed Mr. Brogan in a private nuisance lawsuit and he testified that that horse is in North Carolina. So he's not actually on the property. The sound of gunshots, I have three small children, so the sound of gunshots, I'm within three hundred feet of his indoor arena and on a Tuesday night or a Thursday night or a Saturday or a Sunday, the arena doors are open. I have video and sound on my phone if anyone would like to hear it. It's not muffled, it's very loud. It's a forty-five caliber, which is one of the loudest guns, so.
Have you, have you had a noise, have you had a noise, a reading done on it?
I have not, the other participating neighbors have within the same location of my home.
Okay, and what is that, is that within the town's limits?
No.
It is not?
No, the Board of Selectmen.
Do you have anything, you have, uh, do you have testimony or do you have?
Ms. Clark conducted it, she can certainly testify to that and provide that.
No, did she have a, do we have something from, obviously a noise?
Yes.
Obviously, it's a calibrated equipment. Do we have that as testimony?
We do, yes, I can provide that to you, yes. I just wanna make sure I, all of my points. The timing of the shooting is five to seven P.M. I would assume a normal horse operation where someone.
You have to speak closer to the mic.
A normal horse operation where someone is training, that might take place during the day. I'm not sure that five to seven P.M., when it's homework, dinnertime, those.
Again, we really want factual information. Are you a, are you a horse, are you a horse trainer?
No.
Okay, so you, that's your opinion?
Oh, sure, yeah, that's my opinion.
Again, we really wanna stick to facts, not your opinion.
Oh, sure, okay, I just wanted to make sure I covered the points as far as.
Unless you have, unless you have, unless you are a licensed trainer and you can provide us with that as fact?
No, I don't believe Mr. Brogan is a licensed trainer either, so.
I, I'm not, I don't think, that's not the issue here. It's issue is you're giving an opinion and we're looking for facts.
Oh, sure.
The board is taking in facts, so if you say five to seven is not an appropriate time for training? Are you saying that as an expert or are you saying that as your personal opinion?
I'm saying that as a neighbor, yeah, sure.
Okay, as your personal opinion?
Yes, oh, sure.
Okay, but it's not, it's not a fact as to whether or not training is, should be done during those hours?
No, you, you don't have, and you don't have to take Mr. Brogan's for that either. Um, I just also wanted to clarify, someone had questions regarding how much shooting is going on. So I just wanted people to know that that's happening on a Tuesday, it's happening on a Thursday. I have firsthand knowledge of that. I have video recordings of it, I have sound recordings of it. I'll be quick in the rest of them. The also, the judge considered that it's an organization that comes in for these events. I know Mr. Brogan indicated he opened it up to the public, but that I believe is just for spectators. So the judge also looked at that these people are members of a private club, they're coming in for these events. And the events in scope and size are huge and much larger than any of the training that's going on or breeding at the farm. The other, um, part I wanted to point out. The horses, I believe, I guess Mr. Brogan or Ms. Wick could verify that, but I believe the horses wear earplugs during this.
I couldn't hear you.
Earplugs, the horses wear earplugs.
Still can't hear you. You have to speak into the mic.
The horses.
I apologize, I, I.
That's okay, no.
It's very difficult.
It's fine, it's been a long day for me, I apologize. The horses wear earplugs.
The horses wear earplugs?
I believe that's the case and I would just want clarification from Mr.
Okay, so you don't know this is fact yet?
I don't, no.
Okay.
I, I know it from my own research, that's all I know.
You do what?
My own research, I know it from, so.
You know that his horses wear earmuffs?
The horses that participate in the events, yes.
Okay.
The last point I think I wanted to make was someone requested information regarding alcohol on the property. I just would like the board to clarify, the Board of Selectmen's license indicated that no alcohol was to be sold on the property, but I believe alcohol may be consumed. So I just wanna confirm at this.
Okay, again, I'm gonna ask you, do you know that alcohol is being consumed on the property?
I do not, I'm trying to clarify, yeah.
Okay, the, the applicant has said, no, we just, most licenses in the town, entertainment licenses, are for alcohol consumption. This license does not specify alcohol consumption, so we just wanted to verify that no alcohol was consumed.
That's all I wanna, yep.
Okay.
Thank you. The also, I just wanted to also point out, we talked a lot about two thousand seventeen, two thousand sixteen. I believe Mr. Brogan was involved with Mr. Ford. I learned that through discovery. He was a barrel race organizer. So in two thousand sixteen, I think you'd have information from the neighbors that those barrel races were much larger in number. You had probably at least thirty or forty, probably maybe close to fifty participants in those barrel races in two thousand sixteen. In two thousand seventeen, Mr. Brogan switched to his own run and gun series and those were much smaller in number. And I know that from personal experience from observing next door.
Okay, great.
Let me just make sure I have, sorry, just two more that I wanna make sure I cover them. The last piece I just wanted to clarify as well was the type of boarding. Whether it's rough board or a different type of board, I don't know that information. I just was curious what type of boarding is actually occurring over there and what the difference between rough board and full board is. That's all.
Before Mr. Brogan, uh, Mr. Brogan, why don't we respond to those to make it simple? I've got three things for you. One is that you're not licensed to breed on the property, if you could address that. That your ears, your horses wear earmuffs during the shooting. And would you please explain to the board what rough versus finish boarding is?
I'll, I'll address the first one first, that my stud is not on property. My stud is on property and has been since the day I went to New York and got him.
You gotta use the mic, Mr. Brogan.
My stud, I'm sorry, my stud is on property and has been on property since the day I went to get him in New York.
Okay.
The horse that went to South Carolina was my previous stud that I had to gild and it went down there to see a friend of ours, took care of it for a little while for my daughter. We didn't have an indoor that year and I actually had some time and I took trips to South Carolina with my daughter so she could ride that horse down there. So that's as far as the stud goes. He has not left property, um, so.
As regard to breeding on the.
Breeding, I mean, we have a stable license and we have a lesson license. Paige had, I hold the stable license, Paige holds the trainer's license. And I, I, I don't, I don't believe there's anything for breeding. And you, you, you could probably enlighten us on that.
I'm not aware of any separate license that prevents you from breeding on your property, but that doesn't mean I'm a hundred percent right either.
And, and I wouldn't wanna say either.
Yeah, but I'm not aware of.
And what was the last thing, sir?
The other one is that your horses wear earmuffs. The participants wear earmuffs too.
To each his own, okay? My horses do not wear earplugs. My daughter does not wear earplugs, my partner does not wear earplugs. Some people do. When we started the, um, my daughter's horse, we did start with earplugs to desensitize. And then after that, we've taken the earplugs out.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's one other question about rough boarding or?
Yes, the, the distinction.
We rough board, so I don't, I don't muck stalls, all right? We don't, we have stalls and we don't have anyone in them. We do, each, each of our clients has a paddock with a run-in, which is similar to a shed, a twelve by twelve shed with a door on it, not a door, a door opening. So the horse can go in and out all day long as it wants. The horses eat off a thousand pound round bales that are in between each of the paddocks. So the horses eat hay continuously all day. Like I say, we, we do not, I don't clean borders. All of, all of our borders come and take care of their own areas, all right? I take care of the horses that we own and I take care of the property around all of the horses.
Okay, all right. Other facts or questions from the public? Go ahead.
I just have some things I'd like to point out.
You have to get the microphone.
Sure, thank you. Karen Clark, one thirty Seccong Street.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, but I don't think the mic's on.
It's green.
Okay.
It's green.
There we go.
Okay, I just wanted to refer to the decibel testing that was done back in two thousand fifteen because of the gunfire noise in the neighborhood. The residents paid for decibel testing. And the results of that test were compared to the department, Department of, oh my goodness, the EPA. And the reason the acoustic engineer compared to those types of speci- specifications was because Norfolk's bylaw, their noise bylaw is approximately sixty years old. And the instrumentation used to measure the decibels in the Norfolk bylaws guidelines, the equipment's no longer even made. So when we presented those results to the Board of Selectmen. So, when we presented those results to the Board of Selectmen, they thought, "Maybe there is a noise problem." So, they hired an engineer to do decibel testing, and they tested in the town's frequency. The engineer did some mathematical, uh, equations and was able to translate into the, the Norfolk bylaw, noise bylaw. That very same day, we also hired an engineer, same engineer, to do testing alongside of the towns. That day, Mr. Brogan, um, deliberately hired, um, a jackhammer that operated off the end of a, of a front loader, it was a hydraulic jackhammer. Evidently, he shared this information with the Board of Selectmen that he was going to do this. Jack Hathaway, at a Board of Selectmen meeting, um, after the fact, after this all had happened, chastised Michael for doing that, the Board of Selectmen chastised Michael for doing that, but even though clearly the decibel test had been tampered with, the Board of Selectmen and the town decided that they would stay with the results of their acoustical engineer. Our acoustical engineer then wrote approximately ten-to-twelve-page rebuttal of the town's testing, which we presented to the Board of Selectmen. So, I'd be more than happy to, to provide you with all that testing to help you make a decision.
I guess the question is, and maybe if either you or Dave, Mr. Dukla can answer, did the noise created by run-and-gun during the two shooting events exceed the Norfolk zoning bylaw with regard to noise?
Yes.
It did?
Yes, in the second testing that our engineer did, he transferred his findings.
David, Attorney Dukla's shaking his head, so I'm going to ask him to, or is this a loaded gun?
Well, first of all, first of all, let me just, again, going back to your, your instructions.
Correct.
We're here to discuss the, the, the cease and desist and whether or not the activity is within the scope of, so-
Right.
The, um, uh, the issue of the, of the sound testing, I'm not sure, played virtually really little, if any, role in, in, in the decision and certainly the cease and desist. But having said that, uh, my memory of, of the, those proceedings is that indeed there was a dispute about the, the level of noise on the property, and the Board of Selectmen did hire its own engineer, uh, and that engineer found that, um, uh, the sound levels, as he tested, and I understand there might have been some dispute as to the, the, the baseline or the ground, um, what she was operating, that it was within the limits provided by the zoning board, I'm sorry, by our zoning bylaws, all right? Uh, that's, that was the conclusion. I understand it's still disputed, but, you know, that was the-
Again, it does have very little to do with this, I just, I wanted to give them their opportunity.
Right, and I apologize, I just brought it up because you had asked about the, and if you'd like, I can provide you with those results.
Okay.
But just a couple of other issues that I'd like to, to discuss.
And we wanted, limited to facts, please.
Limited. In terms of the Superior Court's decision, he based his decision on what is normal practice-
I think, I think we all have copies of the Superior Court's decision.
Okay.
So, again, what you're, as Ms. Kamondo said, you're giving us your interpretation of the Superior Court Judge's decision, okay? That's, that, we, we have that, we have the facts of his case. So, again, your opinion is your opinion, you're certainly entitled to it, but it's really not a fact for the board taking. We're, we're looking for facts, is there something at Run-and-Gun Farm that we have not heard tonight so far that we need to know to help us craft a decision as to whether or not this meets the litmus test, as agricultural or not?
I understand, I understand, and I have spoken to Mr. Ron Hall at the Department of Agriculture, and I asked Mr. Hall, "What is a different, what is the definition of agricultural when it applies to horses, not farming stock like vegetables?" Mr. Hall told me, "The definition of agriculture is the breeding and raising of animals. Anything else is secondary to that, such as boarding, lessons, those kind of activities are secondary. The primary activity, just like the primary activity of a vegetable farm is to raise vegetables, and then the commercial aspect of it would be to sell it. So, when it applies to horses, the primary activity is the breeding and raising of animals, and the commercial end of that would be either to sell your stud semen or to sell foals. In the thirty-four years that I have lived here, I have never once seen a foal at Run-and-Gun Ranch." I can get you Mr. Hall's phone number too, if you'd like it. As far as the organizations that host the events at Run-and-Gun, Mr. Brogan mentioned the Northeast Six Shooters, the members of that organization are approximately fifty-five to sixty. He also, he also has events with the International Barrel Racing Association, the Cowboy Mounted Shooting Association, and the New Hampshire Horse Barrel Association. So, in other words, Mr. Brogan is really in essence renting out his property to these associations to hold events. Mr. Brogan himself just told you, "He doesn't clean up, it's the hosting company that does the cleanup. He simply must make some kind of a profit for renting out his property." That's not a fact, that's just an assumption. In terms of the comment that I made earlier, the breeding and raising of horses, Mr. Brogan's own words just moments ago was, "Breeding didn't go well, he just raises horses." Be them, people bring in their horses, horses he purchases, but he does not do the breeding of the horses. Another fact, Mr. Brogan is zoned recreational, sixty-one B. That is his, his zoning status in the town of Norfolk. He was sixty-one A agricultural when he first started, however, he's changed it to sixty-one B. Myself and other residents had a lengthy, two-hour discussion with our Board of Assessors, and we mentioned this issue to him, that, you know, it appears that he's getting the benefits of both sixty-one A and sixty-one B, even though he's just zoned sixty-one B. Our Board of Assessor's opinion was, if he's in sixty-one-
Do you have that, do you have that in testimony and writing for us here?
I can get it from-
But you don't have it with you?
I don't have it with me, but-
And again, it's the Board of Assessor's opinion. He's, so what you're telling us is he's zoned sixty-one B?
Correct.
Okay, that's what we need to know.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Brogan also mentioned that the noise inside the arena was less.
I think we've, I think we've pretty much discussed noise far enough.
The noise inside the arena is just as loud as it is, because it's kind of a vibrating noise, because the barn is built out of wood, but it's wrapped in metal. I think that's about all I have, and I appreciate your time and, and-
No, thank you.
Listening to my concerns.
I will comment on your, on your, on your definition of agriculture. I know, Mr. Hall, I obviously work with the Department of Agriculture.
Mm-hmm.
I report directly to Michael Cahill as the director. Apple Knoll in Millis, the Dover Hunt Club, the Akushnet Cow Farm, the Essex Horse Club, which hosts most of the Hamilton Dressage events, these are all agricultural use farms. Most of them run very similar events as the run-and-gun, uh, void of the shooting. They are all deemed by their zoning enforcement officers, who also is their building commissioner, as agricultural use. Period. They do not require entertainment licenses, and they do not interfere. And this is, if you like it, I can give you the names of number of every, uh, zoning enforcement officer I spoke to, but that is how they are deemed by those, and those are the five largest that operate that I'm aware of in this area, just as, as a matter of fact.
And they do not do breeding?
Hmm?
And they do not do breeding?
Breeding has nothing to do with this. Breeding has to do with whether or not they're agricultural use, and whether these events are agricultural use. But that is deemed by those building commissioners, this board will obviously take that information. But just, it's, you know, you may get, Mr. Hall may say one thing, um, I can cite you information from the Department of Agriculture in North Carolina that would actually rebut that, so, okay?
I agree, but I, I find it hard to believe that you consider the renting of houses as an agricultural use. In terms of the income that Mr. Brogan has stated that he makes now, to, to, to list that in your list of farming activities, to me, seems inappropriate.
That is a, Mr. Brogan, could, that's actually a good point. Mr. Brogan, out of your, is it sixteen acres you have?
Fifteen, sir.
Could you give us a breakdown of your fifteen acres? That's a good question. In other words, uh, properties that you rent on the property, on the, on the entire property that derive some of your revenue, I think it was sixty-eight thousand?
Sixty-seven thousand two hundred.
Sixty-seven thousand, what percent, what is, how is this property broken up? How much of it is agricultural by per quoted definition of agriculture? How much is a residence, how much is rental property?
So, one, one-nineteen Secong Street, which I own, is approximately two acres, fifty-five thousand square feet is that, is contained to the house, and that's what the people rent. The remaining acreage from that is in my sixty-one B for one-twenty-three Secong Street, because adjoining properties can share that, um, tax benefit. So, the, the tax bill for one-nineteen pretty much says fifty-five thousand square feet is X amount for a lot, and then the remaining piece of the land is in sixty-one B chapter land. The same thing over at Nine Fruit Street, which I purchased recently, is, that's actually two lots, the main lot is the houses on, and then the remaining is another four and a half acres that is going to be converted to sixty-one B to go with the farm as well on the next tax cycle.
But right now, obviously, Nine Fruit, Nine Fruit Street is not sixty-one B.
There's about, uh, there's about seven or eight acres that are agro- agricultural.
Which is what is made up of?
One-twenty-three and, uh-
Does that include paddocks and the residential house, or does it include-
No, 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 that's no houses.
No house, okay.
No, no, even, even my lot, they take the fifty-five thousand square feet that you're required to have off of my residence. And then the remaining piece of the pie becomes the, the tax, sixty-one B. So, the same happens with the other, and then I, I purchased one-twenty-seven Secong Street, um, which was about two, two and a half acres, and, um, I, I took and subdivided that, took the front half and built my parents' a house on that fifty-five thousand square feet, and I took the back piece of it and built the indoor arena, so that now is part of the sixty-one B as well, and that is taxed that way.
Okay, so, of the revenue provided us with, sixty-seven thousand was income due to renting?
For the two houses that are not part of the chapter land, but it is part of the farm.
So, the money from the agricultural uses, the twenty-eight thousand for boarding?
For boarding, sir.
The lessons?
No, straight board is twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight is for the boarding, twenty-four hundred dollars is what you grossed for all these races?
I did for the six events, we had four hundred dollars per event, the six events I charged for is the twenty-four hundred, the other barrel races, I gave the, um, arena, donated the arena.
And, and, and lessons? Are they in the twenty-eight?
No, that's, that's, no, that's Mrs., that's Ms. Page's income.
That's totally separate?
Yeah, that's not part of the-
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Any other, um, any, I'll give you one last, uh, crack at it?
No, I just, like, like you say, Apple Knoll, uh, I'll use it as an example because it's probably the closest farm. Apple Knoll is just on the other side of Fruit Street in Norfolk, when you cross over the Charles River Bridge there where the high water comes up heading to Millis. Apple Knoll's on the left-hand side, they have thirty-two events per season at Apple Knoll. Every Wednesday night and every weekend, they have horse shows. They, they do not have any type of entertainment license or, um-
And the twenty-four hundred dollars, there is no, I know we, we talked about renting out the property to other organizations.
Yeah.
You, there's no, is there other income derived?
And just to get that right, to get that correct, um, there was four organizations there that she named off, I, I have not heard of three of them, um, honestly.
All right.
We rent out to the CMSA, all right, which is, which is Northeast Six Shooters, and we rent out to the MBHA, which is the barrel races. Two years ago, we did rent to the IBRA, which was actually some of the smallest events that we ever had, and that's why we don't do it anymore, it wasn't worth it. John gets the Rainham Town Field donated to him, and he has all his barrel races in Rainham. So, we, we don't deal with the IBRA. Those are the only three organizations, other than the miniature horses, which I don't even know what the organization is, to be honest, other than it's 4H, it's, it's a bunch of 4H girls that do it.
Could you rent out, could you do barrel racing without this organization? You, you say you rent it out.
Yeah, so, we, we actually, we actually-
Before you continue, you rent it out, I'm trying to understand this, and it was brought up, is if you rent it out, do you not have any participation in it? Or, in other words, could I have a barrel race if I had enough horses and did it, could I have my own barrel race, or does it have to go through an organization to be sanctioned? I, I'm getting, I want to understand this renting-
So, so the, so the last six events at the end of last year, we did ourselves, so there was no organization involved. It was one of the barrel races, um, that ran the events, and, um, there was no, no organization, it wasn't NBH, she is an MBHA member, but the season ended, they wanted to continue, we ran six events, they were held at our place, covered by our insurance, we have insurance for events, um, so-
And did you derive income from those?
No, what I get from that is my daughter's entry fee for free, to be honest, it's an eighty-dollar entry fee because she runs multiple horses in multiple classes, so that's, that's what I in turn take for.
And would it be possible to eliminate the public? In other words, could you run these events and, and just close the doors to the public? Public being, I guess spectators is the definition of the public, other than people participating in the event?
Yeah, we, we could.
Dave, is, is that a-
Well, I, I, I think the, the pertinent question is, uh, the, the, the participants, that they're, they're members of the public as well, I mean, they're-
That's, that's what I'm questioning.
They're not, right, they're not a part of, of his private operation. So, whether they're spectators or the people being invited onto the property with their horses, their trailers and all the gear-
They're all considered the public, okay, so, obviously, you couldn't run a event without the public then.
So, there's a lot of conversation about shooting, I just want the board to realize that we, we have a big enough piece of property, we can actually shoot there three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day, all right? That's the law. We are not breaking any laws by discharging a firearm on our property at all whatsoever, all right? So, I just want the board to realize that, that that's, that you're, you're right, and, and we, we do that. As far as the, quick thing too, as far as the sound test goes, I think that-
I'm not going to go any further with that, sorry.
Okay, all right.
Okay, all set?
Yeah.
Attorney Dukla, any?
I think you've-
One more, any, any other question from the public? Peter?
Peter Diamond, eighty-four Secong Street, and I just had a question through the chair for Mike. Says he raises horses, and I guess they're to sell them, and, uh, he didn't state how many horses he might have sold this year, if he sold any, so that's a question, has he sold any horses this year, and how much profit was from selling horses? And in doing so, in selling horses, is showing the horses in the event detrimental to the sale of the horse? Is it important to show the horse live in action? Is my question, I guess.
I'll let Mike answer those, I could probably answer them, but I'll let Mike. Thank you, Peter.
Yes, we, we do sell horses, um, in the-
I think he asked, how many did you sell?
Oh, in the seven ye, well, in the, in the six years that we've been doing it, we've sold, I, I'd say six or eight horses, to be honest. Uh, we sold, uh, a horse this year to actually, it stays on the property, we sold it to somebody that leased it from us, and we, we had it out for sale, and they said, "We'd like to, I'd like to buy that." So, um, that horse is actually still on property, but now it has a new owner.
The other question was, do you have to, is, do people buy the first-
Oh, yeah, yeah, by far, so- Oh, yeah, yeah, by far. So, yes, you...that's how we show our product. The three horses that I currently own are all listed for sale on our website. They are for sale anytime anybody wants to come over. We just sold one a couple weeks ago. But, yeah, our website has those horses listed for sale, and the people want to see them in action. So, they'll come to an event and see the horse in action.
Okay. At this time, I entertain...
Can you speak one more time?
Sure. Attorney?
If it pleases the board, I just want to be brief. I wanted to address a couple things raised by Attorney Comandl. First of all, as to the finality of the judgment, the Attorney Comandl mentioned a stay of the judgment, and the reason that we haven't sought that yet is because it's our position that, under the framework of this decision, this body can still render a decision as to...just in accordance with the decision, you know, the court contemplated that the town would be faced with this question again and that they could use this decision sort of as a framework, so that...the reason we haven't sought a stay yet is because this board has the power to find different facts than the court found. Attorney Comandl raised that the court relied on the administrative record from the selectment hearings. I would refer the board to page two, the last paragraph down, where the court refers to the record at the selectment hearings as disjointed. So, I would suggest that the court recognized that the record that it had before it as to how much...what nature of farming activity was occurring on the property or not was blurry at best. And I would again refer the board to page five of the decision where the court finds that the primary use of the property has now become the shooting. And I think that the testimony of Mr. Brogan tonight has shown that the shooting is not the primary use of the ranch property, that it's still very much boarding horses and riding horses and training horses and selling horses. Nothing in the decision essentially says that the mere act of shooting off of a horse suddenly makes it not a horse-related activity. So, I would suggest that the record before the court was disjointed. The court conceded that, and the court contemplated that a board such as yourselves of this town would be able to take in the facts of the matter and render their own opinion based on those. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing with regard to the running gun. Appeal?
Can I just say one more?
Is it a fact of the case or an opinion?
Yeah.
Okay.
When the judge indicated that it was not...that it was disjointed, it was not enumerated.
It was what?
The town record was not enumerated with tabbed.
Okay.
So, it wasn't clear to the judge.
Wasn't organized?
Wasn't organized. That's what he meant by disjointed.
We have a lot of things that aren't organized in town. We can't help that.
And I also just like...
We try.
I wanted to point out another fact. The Comandls live within two hundred feet of the shooting. The arena is within two hundred feet, and that's indicated in the court's decision.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing with Mr. Brogan's appeal to the building commissioner's decision in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section eight, for the property addressed at 123 Seccong Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this will close the public hearing for this...the appeal. We will, depending on our caseload tonight, we may try to make a decision, but we have a couple other hearings we have to hear first. So, you're welcome to hang out in the hallway or watch the other events and see how we do.
Will you notify the butters of your decision?
Absolutely, absolutely.
When?
Once...after we make it, we don't know. If we do it tonight, we'll have twenty-one days. So, we'll make sure fourteen days we'll do it.
The decision is always the mountain.
Okay. At this...at this time...
Yeah.
Okay. At this time, we have a...we had a hearing scheduled for 7:15 that the applicant has asked to be continued. Mr. Cleese, would you please read into record the notice of public hearing for Ruth Palumbo at 82 North Street?
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter forty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws and any other amendments thereto that a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals in room 124 of the Norfolk Municipal Building Number Three Lane, Norfolk on March 21st, 2018, for the following application. Ruth Palumbo at 7:15 PM for an appeal of the building commissioner's zoning enforcement officer's decision in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section eight, for the property addressed at 82 North Street. Reference assesses map 21 block 60, block 29, in the R2 zoning district.
Thank you, Mr. Cleese. The applicant has asked us for continuation until April 4th at 7:00 PM. I wonder if I could have a motion to continue this public hearing to April 4th at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall, room 124.
Okay, thank you. I move to continue the public hearing for Ruth Palumbo to April 4th at...
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and then we are going to come back, and we have a public hearing for 84 North Street. So, Kate, could you Welcome back to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, room 124 Norfolk Town Hall. It is nine o'clock. We will now proceed to our second appeal hearing of 84 North Street. Mr. Cleese, could you please read the notice of hearing into the record?
Okay, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter forty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws and any and all amendments thereto that a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals in room 124 of the Norfolk Municipal Building Number Three Lane, Norfolk on March 21st, 2018, for the application. Richard Bremlist at 7:30 PM for an appeal of the building commissioner's zoning enforcement officer's decision in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section eight, for the property addressed at 84 North Street. Reference assesses map 21 block 60, lot 29, in the R2 zoning district.
Thank you very much. Is Attorney DeLuca or Mr. Bullock going to present the town's position?
I can. You know, the...we've been dealing with this property for the past few years because of the...you know, we really fell into disrepair when the business closed down. The business has been closed about six years. The water service was shut off, which feeds the two houses that are on the property about four years ago. The line had frozen up, and the water department had shut the water off. So, it hasn't had water service for four ye...for the past four years. So, I had sent numerous letters to 82 North Street. This is really one property that's 82 North Street. We actually went to District Court over this. The court ordered the...some of the structures down that were in disrepair. The...in that hearing, we had said that we had sent letters to have, you know, the businesses, you know, halted because in our zoning, after two years, a non-conforming use can't continue if it's been discontinued, the business has been discontinued, based on the fact that they don't have any water there. These buildings have been taken down. Nobody's been there for at least the past four years, that this business basically has lost their rights for grandfathering. So, we sent numerous letters to that effect. The last time we were at District Court, Mr. Bremlist said that, you know, "I'm at 84 North Street," which isn't recognized by the town in the assessors or in the building department records. But, the clerk magistrate asked if we could just send another letter so that he has the ability to appeal this to the ZBA, to hear it at the ZBA level and not at court. So, we've sent another letter back in January, and they've appealed that decision now. So, it's coming to the board now.
Attorney, do you look at anything to add to that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's a good summary. I mean, I think you're all familiar with the site that had pre-existing non-conforming status as a commercial use. However, it has since become residentially zoned property. But, as you...I'm sure you're aware, any pre-existing non-conforming use has protection so long as that use is, you know, is continuous. And that's the question of fact to be determined here, is whether or not there has been a continuation of that, of that commercial use. As Bob indicated, the floors buildings are gone. There's been no water service to property for several years. There's virtually no other activity on this property, other than from what I think you'll hear from your respondent, that he continues to cut wood and sell some wood from the property. There...you know, in the judgment of the building inspector, no other indicia of continuous commercial use of the property, and therefore, it was his determination that that protection has now been exhausted. And any other, you know, attempted continued commercial use of the property would be in violation of zoning.
Thank you, thank you. The board has had the privilege of spending the last four hearings discussing non-conforming use, so we're well-versed on non-conforming use. Okay, the applicant is here?
Yes, thank you. My name is Joseph Mitchell, Jr. My name's Joseph Mitchell, Jr. I'm an attorney with an office at 555 Pleasant Street in Attleboro.
How do people can't hear you? Is there a...
I represent Mr. Bremlist. I've known Dick Bremlist for years. I grew up in this town. As Attorney DeLuca stated, this is a pre-existing non-conforming use. The difference, I think, in what Mr. Bullock referred to as the original court date, was something my client never had notice of. He wasn't part of that, that he wasn't involved in that. He received no notice of that. And that was regarding 82 North Street, which was his parents' property, and that's where the family florist was. And that's the business that was abandoned. That's the business that has been ordered to be torn down. My client lives and continues to live at what he knows as 84 North Street. Granted, it's not...it's taxed under 82, but that's currently the subject of a lawsuit in Superior Court. In fact, we have three different lawsuits going on in three different courts regarding this whole scenario, none of which is of concern here. What is concerning here is that it's not just, as Attorney DeLuca said, it's not selling some wood. He sells a tremendous amount of wood. His...it's his livelihood. His business is that of a forester. He files his taxes under that, which comes under a subsection, I'm told, as under farming, which actually is agricultural use. And if you read the letter from Mr. Bullock, it says non-agricultural use. But, I wasn't even arguing that point. The point I'm arguing is that this wood-selling business began in the 1930s with his grandfather, Arthur, who was a prominent member of this town back in the day. And he did that up until he could no longer do it, and my client's father, Bob Bremlist, took it over. And that was done before the family florist was in existence.
Excuse me. If people in the audience cannot contain themselves, would you please go out to the hallway? Okay? Please, we can't... out to the hallway? Okay? Please, we can't have these hearings disturb. Sorry. Continue.
Okay. Some people have agenda.
Continue.
Some people have agendas. But we're not going to go there. In any event, this has been, obviously, a family feud that's going on. But what brings us here tonight is the notice regarding my client being told that he could no longer sell wood, which is his livelihood. And he took that business over from his father in the late nineteen sixties, nineteen sixty-nine, to be exact. And he's done it continuously since that date. And I have numerous people here that will come in and like to, like to talk to the board and tell them that they buy wood from Mr. Bremlis, that he sells them wood, he delivers it to them. He gets, he has contracts where he buys large logs, and he has equipment, and he chops up the wood, and he sells it as, as cords to people who use it for their firewood, for burning. He's always known it as eighty-four North Street. That's where he built his house. As Mr. Bullock said, he sent him a letter at eighty-four North Street. I have utility bills here to my client at eighty-four North Street. I have the town of Norfolk, Council on Aging sends him notices at eighty-four North Street. The town of Norfolk Tax Collector, she sends him taxes, not for the real estate, but his personal property tax at eighty-four North Street, and the tax for his, his wood business and his, the personal property tax. And I have copies of those. Those are sent to him at eighty-four, not eighty-two. And that's why he never got involved in the lawsuit at eighty-two. So he, he never had his say in court when that all went down. They rightfully said the building has to be torn down. The fact that there's no water service has no, no meaning to him because his, his, his business doesn't require that. It never did. He continues to live on the property. It hasn't been abandoned. His house is still there. He lives there. He's never moved out. That was the issue with the family, obviously, but that's for another day in another court. Like I said, he's, he's, it's how, it's how my client makes his livelihood. And he's done it continuously since nineteen sixty-nine. And before that, it was his father, and before that, it was his grandfather. So it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. To say the business, the business has been abandoned, it never has been. The business at eighty-two has been, but not the business that he's in, which was pre-existing that business. And that's our position.
Okay. As we, as the board in prior cases of this type, we are looking for facts. So what are you going to provide to us in the way of facts? And I guess what I would be looking for, for facts would be a tax return for every year since nineteen sixty-nine, probably a Schedule C attached to that, which would be a self-employment tax bill. I would be looking for utility bills to show that the property is obviously functioning. I'd be looking for equipment bills. I would be looking for a list of customers that are serviced by him and the revenue he receives from those dating back to nineteen sixty-nine when he took this over to the current time. Do you have that paperwork for us today?
I don't have it with me. I can, I can work on providing that to the board and reschedule this to another date to allow me to provide it. I'd be happy to do that.
Well, in order to show us conforming continual use, that would be a prerequisite. So I would, we thought that would have been brought to us today.
Well, I have, I have people here that were brought in that are willing to say that they've been doing this continuously for a number of years.
Do we, do you have tax returns since nineteen sixty-nine?
I don't have tax returns.
But does he have tax returns showing a Schedule C for this property?
Yes, I do.
Yes, he does.
Okay, okay. And he, he lives, he lives at eighty-four North Street where he has the business?
Yes, he does.
Okay. But he, do you pay taxes to eighty-two North Street for the, you pay, so you pay property taxes to eighty-two?
For the property tax.
No, well, no, real estate property tax?
Yes, I do.
So you, you'll be able to provide the board with real estate tax checks to eighty, the owners of eighty-two North Street, showing that you pay a portion of the taxes for the portion of the property that you reside at?
I pay the taxes to the town tax collector. I have the check numbers.
For the, for the real estate tax?
Real estate tax.
So you do pay real estate on this property?
Yes.
On eighty-two. It's all, it's all taxed as one. He pays a portion of it. He pays his portion directly to the tax collector.
How is your portion determined?
I get the word from my mother.
No, that's not me.
Oh, okay. My mother had made an agreement with us. We paid the taxes.
I think, I think he pays a portion. It's no, it's not determined in any way. That would be, there's a lawsuit pending in Norfolk Superior Court now regarding the ownership of that property. So that's, that's, I know that's not the deal.
Again, we're nothing to do, right?
But that's where that will all break out, be determined.
And there's no water on this property?
Not currently.
Well, they're up for the last four years, it appears?
These bottled water, actually, longer. That's another fact that's involved in the lawsuit.
Okay. But there's no water on the property?
No.
So no running water?
The fire department went down there to check because of a complaint made by his sister and found that it was not, there were no safety issues involved in the property.
Okay, no safety.
She pushed now, went down.
Okay. But there's no water. So you can't take a shower?
There's no running water.
No?
No running water.
No running water. So how does water get to the property?
Yeah, bottled water.
Bottled water.
Okay, okay. And electricity, you have?
Yes, I do.
You have electricity? Okay. Do you have a heat source in this home?
Yes, I do. Wood heat.
Wood heat, okay.
And like I said, he has the electric bill, which is addressed to him at eighty-four North Street, which I do have with me.
Okay. Open it up to the board for questions to the.
Mr. Chairman, you said that the courts are trying to decide who owns the land. Do you, do you own the house that you live in?
That's the claim. That hasn't been determined yet. That's the, that's what the lawsuit is about.
And the land that you have your business on, who owns that land?
Same thing.
I have a question.
Sure.
For Attorney. Mr. DeLuca, does a non-conforming use go with a business or with the property
Well, the, the non-conforming use can extend beyond one occupant of the property. I'm not sure ownership is relevant here. As long as the property is being utilized in a certain fashion continuously, then it enjoys the protection. It is not confined to a particular owner or ownership interest.
Okay, okay.
Can I just, can I, I'm sorry, I just, just a little clarification. So just so we have this straight. There are, there's a piece of property off North Street. One of them is defined as, well, one of them is, is viewed as eighty-two North, the other one's viewed as eighty-four North.
The property is viewed as, look at the property. It is eighty-two North Street. There is no, there is no tax record, assessors' record of eighty-four North Street. So the property is eighty-two North Street.
Okay.
Mr. Bremlis has self-deemed his, his house, which he built on that property
It's eighty-four.
as eighty-four.
Okay, so on that property, there, there were or are two businesses. There was a florist and there's a wood chopping.
Forester business, yes.
Business, right? That's right. Okay.
It actually came in in two separate deeds and they're, they're registered land. There were two separate parcels. And, and it's all under one, it was under one ownership. And it was known to the town, taxed, the real estate portion of it was taxed as eighty-two North Street, on the portion where the, his parents' house were, and the family florist was built on eighty-two. On the separate parcel, on that other deed was his wood business, which pre-existed the florist. And that's what they called eighty-four. And it's always been eighty-four, other than on the town rec, but the town, like I said, the town taxes him at eighty-four for the personal property. His, his electric bill is at eighty-four. All his other notice, all his mail comes to eighty-four North Street and has, since he's lived there in nineteen seventy-one, he built the house there.
So, but for the purposes of this hearing, the florist is irrelevant, correct?
As far as I'm concerned, it is, yes.
Okay. Is, is the question whether or not the, the wood business is, is the question whether or not the wood business is?
Continue to, is a non-conforming use that's allowed to continue because it has not expired.
Okay. And is anybody suggesting that the wood business has stopped operation only put in time?
Well, the property, again, the, the parcel known as eighty-two North Street has ceased operation. There is no, there is no water to the property, but both these houses reside on the property.
Not asking about water. Not asking about the florist. Just asking about the wood operation here. Has anybody suggested that the wood operation has ceased?
Yes. The building commissioner has deemed it that the use is no longer a non-conforming use for the past two years. So therefore, it is, it is ceased. It's, 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 it's protection under the non-conforming use.
And is a suggestion that, that the wood business has ceased because the florist has ceased? Is that, is that what's being said here? In other words, in other words, going back to my, my, my question is, has anybody suggested that the wood business has ceased operation? Not the florist. We know the florist has ceased operation, but has the wood operation ended, stopped, been delayed, anything?
Well, as far as my decision was, it was based on eighty-two. I didn't, I didn't even know there was an eighty-four, honestly, when I started this. But the decision was made based on the fact that the florist business had gone away. There was no water service on the site. There's no water service going to the back house. How do you have a business that doesn't even have bathroom facilities at the place? So to me, you know, this whole thing was, you know, I don't see how you run a business without that. So.
You run the business because people come in, they order the wood. He delivers the wood. People aren't coming in to use the bathroom.
If I was to sort of wave a magic wand and your court appearance, your, in Norfolk Superior regarding the ownership of this land was a moot point. And if it came, if it came to a conclusion that there's a separate eighty-four and there's a separate eighty-two, they're completely separate, distinct pieces of land, would we be here right now?
No.
Okay.
Not in my opinion. Well, I don't know. That would be up to Mr. Bullock.
We, we, you can't ask, that question probably doesn't make, that question would not be appropriate.
Well, what I'm trying to figure out is.
Because you could have, you could have, you have two parcels then, both non-conforming. Okay? So the question is, both properties at one point had a non-conforming use. So we could still be here because we could be in the same situation where there's no water at eighty-four. The building commissioner could deem that property.
I don't think water's, I don't think water's the issue.
Water's irrelevant.
Yeah, I think water's irrelevant. I, I think that if eighty-four is a, I'm just, just throwing it out there because I'm trying to get a sense of what's going on here. So if, just, just to carry us a little further. So if, if eighty-four, if eighty-four is a separate piece of land and it's non-conforming, but it's been a continuous operation, no issue?
It's fine unless the building commissioner deems that it no longer is in operation. And then, and then obviously would, would rule to that.
Okay.
Similar to what we saw at Cliff Rockwood Road this past couple of weeks.
So, 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 excuse me, Mr. Chairman. So you talked to the applicant attorney regarding, back to nineteen sixty-nine. Seems to me that what we really want to look at is the last four years, because it was, was it four years that eighty-two ceased operation? I don't know how.
Yeah, I have a letter from the water department saying that they shut it off at that point.
So, so really, we're looking for proof that there was a wood cutting, chopping, whatever, operation in effect over the last four years?
You could, Don, but as you remember, when we looked at Rockwood Road, we went back to two thousand and seven, to two thousand and eleven, when the property was abandoned. We did not, we, we were less concerned with two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, because our bylaw states F three, F three C, two years. So if Mr. Bremlis started his business in nineteen sixty-nine, he would have to show continued use, non-conforming use since nineteen sixty-nine. So it's regardless of what two-year period you pick, he would have to show continued use during that period of time.
Yeah, but nobody's suggesting that that, that the operation ceased.
Actually, he wouldn't. He, he, he wouldn't, respectfully. He would have to show that the business was used. If, if you're, if you're going under the theory of Mr. Bullock that it was abandoned, and according to his letter, it's, it's been abandoned for two years or more. So if he, if he was open in nineteen sixty-nine and then closed, re-then reopened and then closed, that would, that would still comply. I mean, it wouldn't have to be continuous. The fact of the matter is, that's irrelevant anyway, because it was continuous. And I can bring a parade of people in here. And Norfolk, especially back then, it wasn't, it was never a big town, and everybody knew that he sold wood there and they bought their wood supply there. And I have Donna Jones from sixty-four North Street. She's here tonight. Katie and Jim Ballen is from seventy-three North Street. They're here tonight. Larry Boomer at thirty-three Rockwood Road, Pamela Russell and Eric Linter at one forty-three North Street, Nancy and Ray Crosby at seventy-seven North Street. They're all here tonight to tell you that they've been here, some of them since, for forty-four years, some since nineteen sixty-one. And they've bought, and they've known he's sold wood there continuously, and they've, they've bought wood from him. And, and you can hear from all of them tonight.
I have a question. You're right. For Dave, was the florist business part of the non-conformity?
Well, my, my understanding was that the florist business was, was existent there until the last several years, last four years.
Six years ago.
Six years ago. And that, that business, I, I think was easy to calculate, had gone out of business. And they were, they were inactive for a long time. Yeah.
Right. And that's why I'm asking, if, if it's part of the non-conformity of the whole lot, then wouldn't it make sense that you can't separate the two? There's not, there's not two non-conformities. There's only one non-conformity. And the florist shop's been out of business for six years. So a two-year period of non-continuous operation is right there. I mean, you can't, you know, that makes sense?
It is. I, I guess it depends to some extent on whether or not you want to credit the testimony about this being a, a separate business or something apart from.
My client wasn't part of the florist shop.
Apart from, you know, that, that entire business, because.
Which, which circles back to my question.
It's one non-conformity, though. It's not two separate non-conformities. It may be two separate businesses, but it's, it's one non-conforming lot.
Yeah.
Eighty-two North Street is one lot.
Is it the ownership of the lot that determines that?
No.
That has the perpetuity, perpetuity, perpetuity of non-conformity, or is it the business?
It's the use.
The use.
It's the non-conforming use, according to our bylaw.
Right, correct.
Is it incorrect to say that there are two lots here, that there are two deeds, two separate deeds and two separate businesses?
Yes, it's incorrect to say that.
That's incorrect as of now to say that.
Yeah, yeah. Right now, what we know is we have a property in those eighty-two North Street. That's what we know. We have a property in those eighty-two North Street. We have two residences on that property, one which the tax collector recognizes, one they do not. The other property claims they pay property tax to the town for their portion of the total real estate tax.
That would be Mr. Bremlis's.
And the town, the tax collector does recognize it for the personal property tax.
Well, personal property tax is different from real estate tax. Personal property tax is a form the town sends out each year to any business in town, and you can list what equipment you own and the value of it. Is that the personal property tax you're referring to?
No, I'm, I'm referring to this tax bill. With marked paid receipt, made payable.
Can you bring that up? That, to me, looks like an excise tax bill.
It is an excise tax.
Okay, so that's not a personal property tax bill?
That's what I'm calling it as.
Okay, that's an excise tax bill.
It's listed here in eighty-four North Street.
Okay, this is an excise tax bill.
Mr. Luciano, you're correct. There are two, there are two deeds. It is one property. It's Norfolk considers it's taxed as eighty-two. But it comes in in two parcels in the, in the land court. There were, there were two registered.
Is this for our, is this as evidence or?
Do you need that?
Okay, my, my only concern with this is this is everyday trees and flowers.
Correct.
Okay, well, everyday trees and flowers is a florist.
No, it isn't.
Do you sell, do you sell flowers?
The florist was family florist. That's a total separate business.
Huh?
I used to teach school nights and had to have the name of flowers.
Had a what with flowers?
Had to have the name of the business with flowers. I taught school at night.
The name of this business might consider relevant. I'm.
So that's the name of your business? That was just the name of your business, everyday trees and flowers? Okay.
This is a, this is a EverSource bill?
Okay, well, you're gonna, we're gonna let you get to a lot of those. I was trying to understand what this was. So this is a two thousand and eighteen, what you're calling personal property tax, which I assume is for a.
Excise tax, excise tax.
Is, is an ex, well, actually, the town shows it as a personal property tax bill.
I was calling it.
And so this is for, what is this for?
What's it, what's the bill for?
Okay.
Your tax bill, personal property tax, the wood.
The wood, the equipment and everything else.
So this is for your, the items that you have to run your business?
Right, that's.
Okay, okay. So you're submitting this evidence, okay. And you'll be providing us with prior year copies of these as well?
I can get those, wait.
Okay.
I have a question, Chris.
Go ahead.
Right, I guess, and Bob, you said it too, that you didn't even know there was an eighty-four, right? And we've chosen to hear a separate appeal for eighty-four, but is it a recognized property? Can we even rule on something like this until a court decision renders whether this is real?
It doesn't have to be a recognized property because there's a use. So the fact that there's a use doesn't mean there has to be an associated property with that use. There's a use on a property, and it's grant, it has, if it's non-conforming and grandfathered, it's allowed.
And Bob has made two different decisions on two different properties? Is that what's happened here?
There are two different appeals.
So we're able to talk about the specific appeal.
Yes.
I treat it as one, one parcel until the court said, send a letter. I treat it as one, one parcel until the court said, send a letter to eighty-four.
Okay, so I'm saying, I'm just trying to get the distinction, Chris.
I'd also note that the Norfolk Town Census lists my client as residing at eighty-four.
As what?
Residing at eighty-four North Street.
Yeah. The, the only concern I have with that is the senior citizen you mentioned, the census report, the, the personal property tax are all bills that if I go up to Town Hall and say, send my bill to room one twenty-four, Town Hall, they'll actually send it there. So it, it doesn't, it, it doesn't give it legal status-
I, I, as I said, I, I-
It doesn't give it legal status. So the fact that someone way back when gave, gave Mr. Bremlis eighty-four North Street as his quote "address" does not give it the legal definition of what the property is.
You're exactly right.
So it doesn't give, it doesn't condone whether or not it's a legal property or not. Okay? Just because they sent it there, just like I could get it sent to my office.
I'm well aware of that. That's why we're in, that's why we're in Superior Court right now.
It's a whole separate issue.
That's why we're in Superior Court.
Okay.
To determine that. And I would say it wouldn't matter if it's eighty-four, you want to call it eighty-two, fine. It's, it's, as you said, it's the use.
Right.
And that's what it comes down to. And this use was in existence before the florist.
Correct, correct.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Bob. Does the non-conformity go with the florist shop and the wood cutting business? Are there two different non-conformities here that you're dealing with? Or is there just one non-conformity that happens to have two different, separate businesses on it?
I would say there's two uses.
Yeah, two uses, okay.
But can the, can the non-conformity go with two different uses?
Yes.
You can't?
Yes.
And Mr. Bullock can tell me if I'm wrong, but I suspect what happened, my client never received notice, he wasn't involved in the court action at eighty-two, and his sisters started selling small packets of wood on there as part of the, when they were trying to set down, I think they were trying to piggyback off his, and Mr. Bullock said no selling of wood. Obviously, my client's wood was there, and he has huge piles of wood off of his driveway at what, what he's calling eighty-four, so, but like I said, that's how he makes his livelihood. That's how he's made his living since, since nineteen sixty-nine.
Okay. Does your, does your client, does he advertise?
No.
Okay. Does he have, no advertisement?
Other than, other than having a sign out there.
Other word of mouth.
He had a sign out there.
Okay, you have a sign out there?
Correct.
Does it have a phone number on it?
Yes.
Okay, signed with a phone? Do you have a, you deliver, you deliver the wood?
Yes.
Okay, is your, is your vehicle a commercial vehicle?
Yes.
Okay. Is it lettered?
No.
Okay, I think your attorney may want to look into, all commercial vehicles have to be lettered in the state of Massachusetts?
His is a pickup truck.
Okay, all pickup trucks that are commercially licensed have to be, have to be lettered. So it's, it's not lettered, but it's commercial? We, we, are you-
If you don't mind, I'm the son, Richard K. Brumos.
Okay, you're, are you the, are you the appellant?
Um, I've been plowing the snow there and supplying the wood delivery vehicles.
Are you the appellant?
Commercial plated.
No, okay, so we haven't opened up, we will, we'll get to the public maybe in a little bit. Okay, so it's a commercial truck, but it doesn't have lettering on it?
That is true.
Okay. I'm just trying to, again, determine the basis for a business, so, okay? So we have a sign, we don't have no advertising, we have a commercial truck without lettering.
I take it your sister wants you off the property?
Yes. To put her mildly.
To put her mildly.
Yeah, a family. Family issues. Okay. Is the phone a landline or a cell phone?
I have a landline.
Landline? Answering machine?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And you can provide us with your, obviously, schedule C for the years you've been running the business?
Correct.
You can provide us with your electric bills?
Correct.
Equipment bills?
Correct.
Your, we'll call it personal property tax bills?
Correct.
Okay.
Dave, would a non-conforming use override ownership?
Well, I'm not sure.
He, he is-
That was my initial question.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to figure this out.
My, my question, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, and I'm still struggling with this, is, is, is the non-conforming use, okay, have anything to do with the underlying owner of the property? And Dave said, if I heard you correctly, no, in simple words.
Yeah, I mean, it-
I agree with that.
And, you know, a good example would be, and we took a downtown location, or, or, I'm sorry, a similar location that right now is zone residential, but for generations there was a, a business operating on that property, and, you know, it's sold to the next property owner who continued that same business, they'd have the same, they'd have the same benefit, same right.
But does the fact that he, the applicant, this person does not own it?
We don't know that.
And, and the sister doesn't, what we know-
Yeah, okay.
What we know is he doesn't-
So, all right, so he's a tenant on the property?
Tenant.
Or an occupant of the property, using that word generically, continuing, so long as he continues that use, then I think it's still a protected use.
But does the owner of the property have any rights in a case like this?
So the, the, the owner, then, that occupant leaves, the owner comes back, it, the, I guess, you know, the owner will be able to continue, so long as the, the, the activity on the property continues with, you know, with, without interruption for the last two years, then, you know, it's, it's still protected.
The ownership's irrelevant. You can operate there under a license, you can operate under an agreement, you can operate with permission of the owner. The owner could come in and evict, and in fact, that's what's happened here. That's another case we have. The, there's an eviction action, and that's been put on hold pending what happens in the Superior Court action.
And, and since you brought that up-
So there's an eviction-
Okay, one, one at a time.
I'm sorry.
Let me just finish my thought here. Okay, so the only way the owner can get her brother off the property is if she's successful the eviction process?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, no one's saying she's the owner.
It just, he's, he's, his point, his point is that obviously, an eviction and the process of an eviction would have to take place in order for her to do whatever she feels she deems necessary with the eighty-two North Street.
But what I meant by that was the owner, the owner is the estate. His mother's estate, that's the owner.
I understand that. Don, you had a question?
So I guess my question is, how can we, if, how can we adjudicate eighty-four, all right? When, or are we adjudicating eighty-four based on the facts of today, like sixty days, ninety days, two years from now? The underlying decision by the court on the underlying property of eighty-two, okay, could therefore nullify whatever decision we make on eighty-four? If in fact, if in fact, it is determined by the court through whatever issues they're going through between eighty-two and, and that this, this person on eighty-four, okay, is going to be evicted and has no rights to eighty-four, then that would, suddenly, there could not be a business on eighty-four.
No, no, they'd have to succeed in an eviction.
The answer, the answer is, what we do today stand, will stand after a twenty-one day appeal. What happens in the future, we have no control over with these properties. If, and there's a number of scenarios that can happen, but we have no, we have no, we have no, we cannot, we can't predict the future, and we can't adjudicate towards the future.
Once we approve-
Or disapprove.
Let's say we approve-
Okay.
-the continued operation of this business at eighty-four.
Mm-hmm.
My question is, if the applicant is evicted from the property and the new owner of eighty-two, and it's determined they're one piece of property, okay, and so we can't do this, but we've already said that eighty-four could operate a logging business or wood business. So now a new person comes in and buys eighty-two, do they have the right on that piece of property to operate a wood business?
I think if the, if the, the, right, the question, the answer is, if the person who buys the property has bought the property because the courts have deemed the entire parcel as eighty-two North Street, obviously, an eviction would take place, and what we did today would no longer be, because the applicant, the appellant here, would no longer be able to run a business if he doesn't own a property. If the courts deem that he does have rights to a certain percentage of the property, then yes, he would be able to continue to run his property. So it all depends what happens with the, the real estate case that will determine his fate in the future. What we do today will not pre, will not override the real estate issue that underlies it. In other words, they, they, he won't be able to continue the property forever if the courts find that he does not own what he considers to be eighty-four North Street.
To Don's point, though, to Don's point, the non-conformity use still might transfer to the next owner. That's what you're saying.
If, if, if the next owner decides to keep him as a tenant on the property, absolutely.
Or the next owner wants to run a logging business on the, on the property.
Supposing the next owner, yeah.
That's an issue for that person at that point in time. It's not, that's not a question before us right now. So we can speculate all day long, but it's irrelevant.
Right.
It is irrelevant. It would be a separate, it would be a separate business.
Correct.
That would have to be considered at that time.
Other questions from the board? All right, we will, again, as we did in the last appeal hearing, we will ask for any additional facts from the public. I know Mr. Bremlis's son had asked to speak.
Thank you very much. This business has continued every-
Can you just give us your name again?
Richard K. Bremlis, thank you. My address currently is fifty-four Central Street in Millville. I'm a resident in Millville. I currently fabricate a lot of the equipment that is used through the, through the wood business and including the vehicles and equipment. I've also continued to plow this property as well as the front parking lot, so that customers can utilize that or as a turnaround for emergency vehicles if they need be, so. It's been plowed all winter, right up through this year, and it's been taken care of, and I've been doing that since about two thousand. I did it back during when the florist shop was open too. So we've delivered firewood, we've continued production, it's never stopped, so.
Do you work as a subcontractor to him when you fabricate equipment, or do you just do this because, I assume he's your, is this your father?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I have a, I have an automotive degree as, as well as welding. I mean, I fabricate, I, I make whatever he needs, I-beams, joints, you know, I love joint connections, anything that he may need for his equipment. Delivery, anything like that.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other, the woman in the back? You have to take a mic. Nope, behind you. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Ruth Palumbo. I currently reside in Franklin, ninety-two Stewart Street. Eighty-two North Street is my parents' address. They're both deceased, eighty-two North Street. I have supplied you with some facts I left with Amy to try to help you to make your decision about eighty-four, which is not a recognized tax address. I'd just like to clarify that Richard claims he pays some taxes. He pays a hundred dollars a month. Or a quarter, is it a quarter? Well, it's a hundred dollars. That's nothing.
What is, what is it, a hundred dollars a month or a hundred dollars a quarter? And is it for real estate tax?
I believe it's-
Real estate tax, a hundred dollars a month.
He comes up to the tax collector, because I always come up to pay my mom's taxes. The problem is, his whole estate is tied up, there is no money, no cash.
Again, we, you know, the estate, the estate, we don't want it, we don't need to hear about-
And he's paying that amount, I'm just letting you know what he's paying on the taxes.
So what does he pay, a hundred dollars a month for, towards the taxes of the property?
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
He does not pay any share of the mortgage that is on that property. And that's all, as far as the nineteen thirties, my grand, my grandfather, because he is my brother, my grandfather grew strawberries, okay? He worked at Rantham Developmental as an electrician, a master electrician.
Again.
He did not cut wood. I'm giving you facts.
Again, no, you understand, understand. You, two things for you. One is, we granted you an appeal tonight to your hearing, okay? And then you appear before us. I, I would in the future suggest you don't appear when you ask for continuous.
There's a reason for it.
Second is, the only thing we can ask you for tonight is to provide us facts with regard to the wood cutting business and/or your relationship with regard to financials, i.e. you have provided us that he pays a hundred dollars a month to the town for real estate tax-
Correct.
-towards your parents' property.
Correct.
Do you have any other facts for us?
Facts that I gave you in the packet. Have all members, esteemed members, been able to look at it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I guess that's everything I have to say.
Okay.
He did not build the house, but that's okay, that's another whole story.
That's fine. Any other public?
Hi, my name is Pamela Russell, and I live at one forty-three North Street. My husband and I moved here in two thousand and five.
What year?
Uh, two thousand and five.
Okay.
And this is my husband, Eric Linter. And we have been buying wood from, firewood from Mr. Bremlis since we moved to Norfolk continuously. We heat most of our house with wood, and we would have been lost without him. My husband has a bad back, so Richard Bremlis is able to drive the wood to the back of our house so that my husband doesn't have to carry it, and that's really important. Most commercial, large endeavors use very large trucks, and Mr. Bremlis has been able to accommodate us, and we're very lucky. I would really, really miss his service, and I think that many people would. What else can I say? I, I respect him, he's always been there when we've needed him, and he was also our first friend in this town, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Do you mind me asking you, do you pay him by check or by cash?
I pay him by check, and I can provide my checkbook registers. I, I'm very messy, but I can provide proof that we've been buying from him steadily every year. And we usually buy all year long, you know, because we buy ten, at least ten cords a year. So some of the wood we buy in the summer, and we let it season, and, you know, we buy, we buy all year long because it's, it's a lot of wood.
Yeah, yeah, ten cords. So what would you say your total bill would be a year then, roughly?
Probably around two thousand or more.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I appreciate being able to speak on behalf of a Norfolk resident who I respect.
Great.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Just, what is the disposition of this land right now? Is this in probate?
It's in probate, well, before his mother passed away, we...
Microphone, please, microphone.
Sorry. The, there is a matter in probate, there's a matter in Superior Court, and then there's a matter in Rentham District Court, there's three matters going on, not counting this one here.
So is a probate still, still under ascertain, you're in a complex situation, because you need to determine who owns the land before you can wrap up a probate?
Correct. Well, the probate, I'm not doing the probate, we filed an objection in the probate matter, and that's, like I said, that's pending in the probate court.
Okay.
The Superior Court action was filed prior to that, and that was for, to determine whether or not my client had an interest in this property. We asked for a declaratory judgment in the Superior Court, claiming that he, and I had filed a lien against the property, and it was, since it was in Land Court, I had to go into Boston and get permission from the Land Court to file the lien, claiming he was the beneficial owner by means of a constructive trust. They were, they had to check it out first, and they gave me permission to file that lien, which I did, and then that led to the lawsuit.
Bob, what's the, what is the total acreage of the entire parcel? Do you know offhand, or?
I don't know.
Or do you know what the entire parcel acreage is? Ruth, do you know what the entire?
It's in my calendar.
You don't know offhand?
I think it's like, almost five acres.
Total of five acres?
I was going to say a little less than five acres.
Okay. Is, what percentage of 84, I mean, $1,200 a year, what percentage of 84 North Street?
That was based on an agreement he had with his mother, that's where that figure came from.
Okay, so what, what percentage of the property of this five acres is 80, is he saying is sort of his right?
I don't know, but I can get that for you.
You don't know?
I don't know offhand.
Does he know?
No, I don't know.
You don't know? Well, is it an acre, or is it 55,000 square feet, is it?
I think I left, I think I attached to the appeal a copy of the plan.
She sent us this online. Amy, you sent it all this online.
I emailed yesterday.
Yeah, but you didn't give us it tonight.
No.
It's on there, but it's on what you sent us.
Yeah, I could print it out.
I, it doesn't have the, it doesn't have the square footage, I have it outlined in yellow on the plan.
Is it in the, in the book?
Yeah.
Do you want to, do you want to look at this and tell us from this?
I don't think I have.
Well, you're looking at a deed, is there a plan? You're looking at a deed.
I don't see it. Chris, I have 235,000, 224 square feet.
That's the total.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand, what is his...
That yellow outline is what I was calling 84, but it doesn't have the square footage on it.
Well, it's 291 by...
Correct.
368?
I believe that's 368.
Look with one of our people with a good calculator, give us a calculation, how many square feet that is?
I've got the engineer in it right now. Didn't even have to say a word.
You should have already had it done.
It's amazing.
How many acres is that?
She's keeping it in ten.
235?
235.
224.
230, yes, 2, it appears to be 291 by 368 is what they're...
It's 107,000, and the whole total was 235,000?
Bob, an acre, an acre is...
43,000.
So it's a little over two acres is what they're claiming is theirs, okay.
2.46.
Yeah, okay.
2.46.
There we go.
2.46.
Okay, 2.46 acres, but again, that's what he's claiming.
Is that Mill Pond, is that the Audubon?
Yeah, it abuts it, yeah, okay.
And all of which really has nothing to do with why we're here.
Say again?
All of which really has nothing to do...
Absolutely, it does, actually, because if it's under two acres, he would not be able to use the agricultural exemption, as you're aware.
And I'm not claiming, I'm claiming he's a continued business, a pre-existing non-conforming use, which the town has already agreed that he was.
But F3B, any non-agricultural, non-conforming use that has been discontinued for two years may not be renewed. So what I wanted to establish is that it is non-agricultural.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And the two years does not say 2016, 2017, it's any time since our bylaw, which is 1968, that there is a two-year period of non-continued use. That's our bylaw. And we actually have enacted on that bylaw. Do we have any more public input or facts? Donna?
Donna Jones, 64 North Street. I received a notice of the hearing, both hearings, with the one regarding Richard at 84 North Street. I came to Town Hall and the Land Use Office and asked, this is a notice of appeal, what are they appealing? And I was handed a piece of paper, two of them, one for each hearing, and the one addressed to Richard says, you're ordered to stop the business at 82 North Street. Maybe that's the same question that's been asked before, is, is his business on 82 North Street?
The determination of what the property currently, according to the Norfolk assessor's office, is 82 North Street, the entire parcel. The fact, whether he's 82 and a half, 82 and three-quarters, 83, really doesn't matter. He has a non-conforming use on an existing parcel of land in Norfolk. Okay? How's that? All right.
Isn't the question, then, isn't the question, then, one of continued use or non-continued use? That's the only question, then, right?
Exactly.
That's it.
That's the question, you got it.
Okay.
You win the prize tonight, Bob, congratulations.
Glad to have you here.
So, has anybody suggested that, as I asked like a half an hour ago, has anybody suggested that this operation ever ceased to operate?
Yes, yes, the zoning enforcement officer.
Enforcement officer.
But he based that on a water service and a portion of the non-conforming business that's since been taken down. But what about the other non-conforming business?
Well, we are trying to...
Which one?
What we're trying to do is take in facts to help support this other non-conforming business.
So far, so far, I've only heard, I've heard, well, the lady in the back suggested that at some point somebody, her grandfather grew berries or some strawberries there, but other than that, has anybody suggested that this property hasn't been used? Other than Bob, I mean, Bob's obviously doing his job, is, you know, but then we have other folks that have stepped up and said it has been in use, that it's been used, so it's, I'm a little bit confused as to...
No, you're not confused.
No. We're taking in the facts as to, you know, again, people have said they bought wood from, that's a fact. We're going to get financial facts to prove that this was a business that ran on a property in Norfolk. We're going to get, that's the type of testimony we're looking for, so we can make a decision.
So on the stuff of like 82, 84 and everything else, it doesn't even matter?
Right, there you go.
Chris, can I ask a question?
Yes.
One thing I'm trying to understand is, are there any limitations on how far back we can look? I guess where I'm going with this is, this might be a question better answered by our counsel. Are there any limitations potentially set forth by the state on how far back someone claiming non-conforming use has to look back to?
No, I don't think there is any standard in that, at least I'm not aware of one as to a statutory standard. I'd instead guide you to your own zoning bylaws and what the, you know, the requirements of your own zoning bylaws would be. I think your chairman has outlined that pretty well. Was it 1968, is that what you said?
1968 is our official zoning, well, 53...
March of 53.
Right, and then 68, we revised it one more time, right? Yeah.
Okay. So I think that the, you know, the secession language, I think is what it is, you know, is pretty clear, and, you know, I think your chairman got it right.
As always.
You were doing well.
I had to get it in, though, I mean, our town council gives you the credit, right? Do we have any more comments from the public?
Hi, my name's Jim Bellness, 73 North Street. I moved into Norfolk back in 2010, and I can tell you that Mr. Bremmels has been in business since 2010.
Do you buy wood from him?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Sure, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Ray Crosby, I live at 77 North Street. I got married and I moved in with my wife 35 years ago, and as far as I can tell, with that chainsaw gone, he's been in business since I've been here.
So that's 35 years?
35 years.
Okay. Sure.
Hi, Dave Johnson, I think I have a beat. I've been in Norfolk, oh, sorry, Bob, close to you, almost 60 years.
60 years?
I am, I grew up...
You're not that old.
Yeah, I am, almost. I grew up at 68 North Street, this has been in business since I was a little kid, I actually live on Johnston Way, which is in a butter to 82. I hear the chainsaw, and I think most all of you have lived here quite a while, if you have not gone down North Street and seen a huge pile of wood there, it doesn't get there by itself. I didn't come here to support Richard, but he has been in business ever since I was a little kid. And I hear the chainsaw, I am, like I said, I am in a butter, and nothing against Bob, it's a very convoluted, obviously, property there, but as far as, again, I'm not a lawyer, but there were two businesses there, I believe, I guess, sorry, that's my opinion, but that's been a continuous business since I was a little kid.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other facts? Okay. I would like to give the appellant the courtesy of providing us with some of the paperwork I earlier requested, I think that would only be fair. So I would, I would like to afford him the opportunity of a motion to continue the public hearing, and we will...
I'll continue it.
Yeah. You got to give your date and time certain, say it better. Do you agree with that?
I do, thank you.
Okay.
Does he have to request it? Does he, does he request a continuation?
I think he, well, we, we can, well, we can either, we can either close the public hearing without testimony supporting his financial facts, or we can continue the public hearing to afford him the right to have those facts.
Okay.
I feel it's important to offer him the right to provide us the financial documents.
Does this have agendas, draft agendas?
Oh, okay, when do you want to continue this, Mr. Chairman?
I don't know if we, are you available on April 4th? No.
No, actually, uh...
When are you available again? You know, I don't, I don't know, I don't think we need you, not that we don't, but we do, we don't, I think we can buy.
Yeah, I'm happy to consult, you know, with the chairman or with the administrator.
And I think what we're looking for is you could provide us with financial facts, and that should be really all we'll need, so I'd like to see if we can, can you be available on the 4th of...
I won't be. Is there, is there another date available? Chris, can the facts be submitted outside of the open hearing?
No, they've got to be part of the public hearing, they've got to be entered in the record.
Can we push it to, then the next, what would be the next, first scheduled date when we know we have time, because we know April 18th will be long?
We don't have any time. Yeah, or May 22nd. Do we have May 16th, Amy?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
It should have a draft.
We have 9 Fruit Street. Okay, so we could do May 16th at 7:15 if you choose. Could you do May 15th? May 16th, correct.
May 16th? Yes.
Okay.
I move to continue the public hearing for Richard Bremmels, 84 North Street, to May 16th at 7:15 PM.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those a favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Based on the late hour, would you prefer to, I think, would you prefer to deliberate these at a later time?
I would, I would.
So at this time, do I have, we will, for anybody out in the audience, we will be deliberating run and gun at our next public hearing, which is scheduled for April 4th at 8 o'clock. And then do I have a motion to close the zoning board of appeals meeting?
Do you want to close out the minutes?
Hmm?
The minutes, the minutes out of the way?
No, because it's 10 o'clock, no. I think you got to go through those minutes, there's a lot of minutes, so. I think I'd like to see a motion to close the zoning board of appeals hearing for March 29th.
I make a motion to close zoning board of appeals, yeah, zoning board of appeals of March 29th.
At 10 o'clock?
At 10 o'clock PM, second.
All's a favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're right.
Thank you, Caitlin.